It is four P M. And I would like to begin the November sixteen City Council work session. Today, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors as the first item in the agenda. And I would like them if you can introduce yourself, please.
Thanks. I'm Pat Hayden, Chair of the Johnson County Board of Supervisors.
Roy Pham Porter, Vice Chair.
Lisa Green Douglas, Board Member.
Rod Sullivan.
John Green.
Welcome. The first item in the agenda, we are discussing the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. And I would like to turn it to our City Manager Jeff Ruin to start the discussion, please.
Thank you. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors. We appreciate your time. I understand you had a long ARPA meeting yesterday. So you're right back at it again with us today. We really do appreciate that. And again, appreciate you coming here and meeting with us at our regular time and your busy schedules. So the the hope for the work session today is to begin to identify areas of collaboration. Now that the initial public input phases for both jurisdictions have been completed. I think both elected bodies have done some initial prioritization of funds. And we certainly want to see where we can identify areas of collaboration. So the staff at both the county and the city have shared some of the progress with each other. And we've bullet pointed up here some of the reoccurring themes that came up in both of the early deliberations from the elected bodies. There's a lot, the bottom line is there's a lot of opportunity to collaborate, which is really exciting. And I know both the city and the county staff are eager to work together. We could not work through all these issues in one meeting tonight. So what we've done is tried to identify some of the more urgent matters from our lens that we feel like we need to be moving into program implementation on. So for tonight, our suggestion is that we focus on those four issues up at the top of the screen there. That's the direct payments to eligible adults, eviction prevention, housing repair and relocation, and affordable housing. We hope we can have a little bit of discussion on each of those four items so that we can begin to move forward together or separately, depending on some of the deliberations tonight. That said, this is your meeting. If you want to tackle different topics, you're certainly more than welcome to do that. We're again just trying to structure this so we can get as much done in the limited time that we have tonight. It probably goes without saying, but some of the benefits of collaboration, obviously, probably at the top is that it's simpler for whoever the recipients are. If we're working directly with households, organizations, to only have one entity to work with, one application process, one set of eligibility criteria certainly can make things easier and expand access to programs. It can simplify the grant administration process and some of the overhead costs so that more money can be put into the actual programs themselves. And that goes, you know, to stretching those dollars as far as we can. The more we can collaborate, the more programs we can get off the ground and the further reach that we can have with these one-time ARPA funds. So again, this will be our areas of focus. What I would suggest to you is we tackle these one by one tonight. But again, if you all feel comfortable with a different format, this is your meeting and you're free to take it wherever you would like. So I thought we'd start with the direct payments to eligible adults. Both the City Council and the Johnson County Board of Supervisors have identified this as a priority use of ARPA funds. Our understanding that the Board of Supervisors will begin some intent discussions on this program tomorrow at your work session. So I understand you don't have a hard proposal that you're working off at this time, but that those discussions will begin tomorrow. I think there's a few key questions that would be helpful in tonight's setting. And that's what the bottom part of this slide is, just something to kind of kick things off where we can find some agreement. And then I'm sure your conversation may take you some different ways. But the first question there is whether there's agreement that one countywide program is really the best way to go as opposed to the city doing one program and the county doing one program. It seems pretty straightforward to me, again, just from the application standpoint and communication standpoint out to persons that may be eligible for a program like this. But that's the first point that we'd suggest that you try to come to a consensus on. And then, you know, not knowing exactly how all the funding will be put together, assuming the county is going to do a program for all residents within the county, you know, a discussion on what opportunities there may be for the city to supplement. So if Johnson County does not allocate enough funds and there's residents who otherwise would be eligible perhaps, but cannot access it because of a limited county funding, can the city supplement that? Basically, how can we work with you to ensure that all of our residents can access any type of program that the county may launch? So obviously, we've got county staff here. We've got city staff here. We're happy to try to talk you through any questions that you have. But I think I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Protem, and allow you to lead the discussion.
Yeah, we can open the discussion now.
Well, I can kick this off just as one supervisor. You know, the county has been doing general assistance, basically, in some form or another since Johnson County became a county. And I think that an additional benefit that we would get from working together in that way is that our general assistance people are very knowledgeable about other programs that are out there as well. And so part of their work is certainly distributing direct payment. But some of their expertise is in referring people to other services in the community that might also benefit them. And so I think there's some real advantages to capitalizing on that and using the existing county general assistance staff.
Does the county, when in its general assistance program, have the capacity to deal with people in different languages? Who don't all speak English?
We currently have had one of our general assistant employees who has been actually working out of CWJ to work through the application process with people who are French speaking and Spanish speaking. So for that, yes, that, those two languages. But so far, that's all specifically for that program.
I was just wondering about eligibility criteria. I think the general assistance framework, the idea of having like the staff that already are doing this kind of thing makes a lot of sense to me. And having a unified program, if we can agree on the parameters, makes a lot of sense to me. Is the county receptive to having different, like dramatically simplified kind of application process compared to the existing general assistance? Or is that something that's been discussed yet?
I think we have simplified the application process. I think we did that in August so that there would be, you know, more residents that would qualify for assistance. I think, you know, we're always open to have those discussions. But I think that you would be pleased at some of that simplification that's already happened.
Okay.
And I think you could probably do something concurrently because there would be people that would be, well, based on what we've done anyway, I don't know by you folks, but there would be people that would be eligible based on need. And then there would be people that would be eligible based on other circumstances. And a person could, in theory, be eligible for either or, or both. And so.
And that's talking about two different things.
Two different things.
General assistance and then this direct payment.
Yeah.
Of ARPA funds to eligible adults. You know, we haven't defined as a board yet eligible adults.
Okay.
But it would be nice, I would think, for an individual to know that you only have to go one place to check your eligibility for both programs.
For the direct payment and what does the program?
Well, the existing general assistance program.
Oh, okay. You mean they cannot be eligible for both?
They could.
No, they could be.
They could.
Yeah.
But that way you don't have to go to one.
Sure.
Person who could essentially would be knowledgeable about both and could administer both.
I mean, so it sounds very much like the, almost the equivalent for governments for what the non, some of the nonprofits do with coordinated entry at this point. So you get, basically, you get, you just, you just put your, get all your inputs in once and are able to apply for more than one. Is there, do you know if there's any, any talk? Are you thinking at all about asking other municipalities to contribute to this as well? Of course, we're not talking, we haven't really talked money yet. But obviously, Johnson County and Iowa City have the lion's share of the money, but there is, there are funds elsewhere as well.
Johnson County staff who are in the audience, they have done a great job of reaching out to the other municipalities and have continuously reminded them and informed them that any type of collaboration that they'd like to do, we certainly would be interested in that conversation. I don't believe at this point, you know, we are, we are obviously collaborating with Iowa City and are so pleased to be here. But at this point, we are not talking about reaching out to the other municipalities going forward. But always, always open to the conversation.
My question is, you know, I know like a general assistant office, and you know, in the beginning, this is will be a lot of people like rushing to apply. Are you going to be just opening to the public for them just to come and apply? Or this is going to be by appointment? Or do you guys on that kind of stage of things or not yet?
So I think we're, you know, we're talking about two very specific things. You know, the general assistance, which certainly has been a county program forever. And again, that's what I was referring to in as far as simplifying the application process and the requirements. As far as payment to essential workers, you know, we are just working through that process now as far as eligibility, you know, application process, how we're going to move forward. So we don't have, we don't have any specifics on that. But, but again, we'll start that discussion probably tomorrow at a work session.
Sure. I think so. I'm personally interested. I don't know the other councils, but we are interesting and knowing. Is the county gonna like solely do the program for the like adult eligible for payment? And if after that, if some, like, for example, you assign certain amount of money and if you run out, the city will boot some or, yes, I would like to know if you thought about that.
And we certainly will share those details once we, you know, have those at hand to share.
Okay.
Just to add to what Pat has said, we have a whole series of points for consideration that the ARPA leadership team has been working through that we need to bring to the full board and say, these are things that we need to decide on. And that's going to happen tomorrow. So we've got a little bit of a timing issue here that makes a full discussion of this kind of challenging because we haven't, as a board, pinpointed some of those details that would make this discussion a little easier.
Yeah.
I think that's very clear Supervisor Douglas. But I think a discussion amongst us would be helpful to you too, so that you have some points to consider in your meeting tomorrow so that you kind of plan ahead.
Very good. Roy Pham.
I would just like to say that being that we are doing a collaboration, what I see is since we already had somebody from our general assistance program working over at CWJ because of the languages, if not stating CWJ do the work, but if the city can place somebody and an employee or, and plus with one of our employees and people go over there, at least we would have the translation. You have the Spanish, you will have the Sudanese, there will be various ethnicities for people to fill out the application. And the help would already be there. So that's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I think if Iowa City, I mean, we, I know as a council, I think prioritize translation. And if that's something that the city can assist with, that makes a lot of sense. And maybe that's the kind of, kind of thing you're looking for from us so we can, I don't know. But, and I don't know, councilors, if we want to, my, my sort of sense of this is we need to maybe decide for ourselves what we think eligible people might be or at least talk about those parameters. And then the county is going to have their conversation tomorrow. But we may at least be able to help them see if we're on the same page or not.
Okay.
So I think, I don't really know where to begin on that. I guess we're talking about adults, right, which was people eighteen and older. We're talking about people who have not received certain assistance or, I mean, can we kind of flesh that out? Maybe staff is better equipped to.
How would you, how would you verify that?
I mean, I personally am a fan of the self-certification. I mean, I think what we saw last year with the program that was being administered at CWJ with the shelter house assistance, when we kind of were willing to take that step to say if you, you know, are willing to say under oath that you meet these criteria and you are presumably a resident of the county is another requirement. And if there were, if we didn't agree on elements, right, if the city said, well, we want people to, we want some different criteria, then we'd have to figure out how to administer that. Yeah, I don't know how other councilors feel.
Well, we do know that there's going to be some issues with identification. So one of the things that Johnson County has done. of the things that Johnson County has done is the community ID. So that right there will be most definitely one of the main things that if they didn't have it, they had their community ID, we can identify them that way. But like you say, you have to be a resident of Johnson County. You couldn't get no better than the community ID, so for those who didn't have.
Because they've already met.
They've already went through that process, yeah.
I mean, I think that's, that's a clear, that's a huge advantage for this, for this county to have done, done that program and have, and have that ID out there. That's, that's an enormous step up because if they don't have other IDs, they can have that and that, so.
I also believe there is some people still, they don't have their community ID yet and for example, yesterday at CWJ, two people came and they, they don't have their community ID and they know that they live in Coroville. So if with the program, where are you holding, like for example, as a general assistant, whatever you decide later, if we can have a, like a mobile clinic for community ID will be an advantage.
I think the trust factor is going to have to be very important too on, on both sides and on, on the persons that are applying because from what I've heard, there's still that sort of fear factor that ICE is gonna be right around the corner and grab them if they say that they're not a citizen and also on the fact that we have to trust that they truly are residents of Johnson County and really do qualify. So I think that trust factor is going to be very important.
And also, I think also working with the leader from those community will be really huge if you can work with those, like the leader from the same community, from the, the community that are eligible, because those are people that we know and the people who know the folks around the area. So, you know, consider that too, like to identify some people to help you, like bait help, I mean, you know, with your program or our program too.
I'd like to go back to what Pauline said, that trust factor, applicants trusting us that, you know, if they claim that they aren't, you know, that they are undocumented, that there won't be, you know, someone waiting in the wings for them. The other end though of that of, are simply trusting that they are residents comes with a cost because of all of the compliance pieces that go with part of the US Treasury guidelines and, and the compliance pieces that have to be there when you give money. We would have to know that they are residents somehow. Just like with the community ID, they did in fact have to show something that, you know, piece of mail or something that indicated residency. That it, it can't be, and Laura stated that resident, residents of Johnson County, you know, that that would be one of the criteria. So I, I think that we have to be, move forward with that with an open heart certainly, but also caution and protection of, of us as an entity, the two entities.
I mean, I, I agree, but I, I think that also what Mayor Protam said is if, if there was a way to link up like a, a mobile county ID station with this so that people who don't have them have the opportunity either to do it there or do it somewhere nearby or know exactly what they're gonna need to go and get one so that they can come back and register for assistance, linking those two up could help us all because then we'd end up with more people with, with an ID and, and they'd also be eligible for it.
There's definitely gotta be that away because right now, community ID is through appointment only. So that's not gonna get people through fast, so we would.
And also, there's a ti, a timeline from when you make the application to when you get it. So that would certainly be something for consideration to start doing now, some of those.
Yep.
So that prior to the application process for eligible adults to receive payments, if we had a community ID or several options for getting that.
As far as transportation, some of them might not have transportation, so we can go into the mobile parks. We know, we know where to go, you know, those that can't make it, we can go to them.
I think that's where it come, you should identify some leaders and hire them to help you doing that because after you identify the programs, the people who going to work on the programs and if it can be not only at the general system, maybe yeah, they can move around and do like a mobile and, and identify from each community people who you trust that will point out the people who really are eligible for this and help you.
Yes.
Out, yeah.
So you're suggesting they help out with the application process?
I mean, like, I, I, when, yeah, it's gonna be application anyway. I don't think nothing will be without application.
Right.
It will be like, that's what I envisioning, I don't know what the others say, but I envision it like application symbol questions.
Yeah.
And after that, do it, not only do it like, for example, at the general assistant, why don't go like move around, go like to, like have a clinic, mobile clinic for that somewhere and identify leaders to help you because they supposed to be like living on that place or they know that place very well, so you can work with them.
Okay, I certainly don't wanna, don't wanna cut off any discussion, but just to summarize kind of where I'm, what I'm hearing and give you an opportunity to correct me, it does seem that there's consensus that there should be one program, general assistance seems like the logical home. I think that's a, 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 a great place to start. The county's got a little bit of work to do tomorrow and probably the days and weeks following to try to put together a, a framework of a program. I think the city council will be anxious to kind of review that and offer some, some thoughts and then the ball will kind of be in the city's court to, to determine if we want to do anything above and beyond whatever it is that the county may propose. But good discussions on the application criteria, proof of residency, age. There's some discussion about self-certification around the COVID impact and possibly other elements that may be required, mobile efforts, translation, all, all things that we made note of and, and will continue to talk with the county staff about. So anything else before we move on from the direct payments? It's nice to start off with one where we know we can really work together on and have a, have a good impact.
Just from a regulatory standpoint, as far as the treasury guidance like Supervisor Green Douglas was talking about, do we have any reason to think that there would be certain criteria that could not be self-certified?
I don't know that I'm prepared to answer that right now. Look at the county staff or any of the city staff. You wanna? You wanna?
Mike Henshaw, Executive Director, Board of Supervisors. At least two criteria, we have to take reasonable efforts to ensure it's correct would be the actual identity of the individual and their actual place of residence, that they are in fact a county residence. So there'd be at least two. But of course, remember the decision-making is constrained by all the United States Department of Treasury regulations in applicable Iowa State Code. So there's probably actually a series of decisions you can make within a range and so that's just a thought to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Anything else on the topic of direct payments? Okay, eviction prevention, and I'm gonna hit the lights just so the screen's a little easier to start. All right, the second topic that we are suggesting you tackle is eviction prevention. Again, showed up on both the county list and the city list. We already have some collaboration in the works on this front, particularly with the partnership with Iowa Legal Aid and Shelter House at, at the courthouse. Iowa City has also done some additional eviction prevention work in the past year with both local and relief funds that we've received. I think it's safe to say that we, we, the, the programs that have been started in the last year are built really for the emergent situation. They're not really built for long-term administration. In other words, there wasn't a, a real push to really analyze the staffing needs and the resources. It was, it was get the program stood up as fast as we can and let's help as many people as we can. We have an opportunity with these ARPA funds to do a longer-term program. You know that the ARPA funds can extend use all the way into 25. So if we're going to have long-term eviction prevention or at least two, three years of eviction prevention, I think it's really smart that everybody just kind of takes stock of what's there right now. We have a good framework, but it may not be resourced for the long haul. We may need to invest in some, again, additional staffing for those agencies that are carrying out those programs, some additional outreach. You mentioned translation in your earlier discussion, that would certainly apply to this discussion as well. So what we wanted you to talk about tonight is your observations, your thoughts on the existing eviction prevention programs that we've stood up. If you're comfortable with the city and county staff working with those providers to really kind of bolster the program for, for a longer period of time. And if you're seeing any gaps in the service, if you're, if you're hearing things from your constituents that you'd like to see addressed in a proposal, we can certainly work on that with the various providers in the community. I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you, Janice.
Okay, and start the discussion?
I mean, I think it's worth the longer-term investment. I think it's something we should do. I just have anecdotal experience from talking with some people who participated in the Iowa Legal Aid program, that it seems to be very, very effective with that desk that they've had at the courthouse. That is the absolute, you know, last step, however, it's not, I guess it is preventative technically, but it's not proactive. So I guess there's a question about the existing programs. Are there any categories of people who wouldn't be eligible that we might want to consider expanding for or, I mean, I guess I'm not totally sure who we're serving.
I mean, I guess I'm, from the little bit, from the, the bit that I have heard, I'm, I would be more, I would be concerned about, or I would want to look at figuring out how to expand it on the front end so that we, we make sure landlords are fully informed and figure out how to get the information in the hands of tenants before, in whatever languages they need before they get to this point, so they know that if they get some kind of eviction notice, whether it's legal or not, they know what the resources are and where to find them. Because I think that, I have the sense that there's still a lot of people who for, don't really know what their rights are and don't know where to find out the information. Sure, certainly if they show up at the courthouse, there's gonna be something there, but so many evictions and issues occur because people don't actually make it that far in terms of going to court.
I know that the Affordable Homes Coalition and Sarah Baron, they've done a lot of work in this area and I'd, I'd certainly like to know what they thought about how things have gone and, and what improvements could be made or, or not. But I, certainly somebody we should bring to the table, I think.
I think from my experience with Sarah Baron on that, I know that the state was taking a long time for the people to do. I know that the application process is very difficult and I know that taking times until, you know, sometime people receive evictions and they have, while they are waiting for the state, they have to go to the Iowa Legal Aid or they have to go to the, you know, shelter house so they can prevent that evictions. I, I, I just believe we need a quick program, we need a, a program that may be designed by the city and the county where they hire people specifically of just doing that. I, I'm really gonna be really, from my experience, nothing against other programs because as a program, the, the only thing other programs have a lot thing to do beside like helping people with this. And I think now we have money, we can hire people specifically just to doing that, nothing else. And this should be like a, maybe a county employee temporary and a city employee temporary and we put a program. I don't know where your house is, I don't care, it's, it's in the city, on the county, somewhere else, but people really to focus only and helping those people and expedite the process and not make it difficult. If you, they have all the criteria, if they met, you know, all the eligibility criteria, okay, just fast doing it, like verify from the landlord, they behind and after that do it. Because if we're gonna do it the way that it's currently doing, that's not gonna be working. We still have money. We have those money since last summer and it's still sitting there. The process is really difficult, that's what I really wanna say.
So I think Jeff, that kind of answers your question, some of the comments Mayor Protam said was, and I think you described as bolstering the program and I think that's what it would need is, is a boost in, in staffing and outreach, as you said, and, and funds, something that would help. I think the extra person would help maybe in the delay process and letting these people know ahead of time. I mean, obviously, most of them, I don't know the situations, but most of them are aware, I mean, they're probably already behind in their rent and so they're anticipating it's going to happen. So it's not gonna be overnight and they're evicted the next day. So hopefully we can avoid those kinds of situations.
My understanding is there, there are actions that are happening or have to be happening in Des Moines right now as well because this, Iowa is one of the bottom tier of states in terms of rolling out the funds to applicants and I believe that by yesterday, they had to, they had to produce some, they had to submit some sort of report to the federal government to, that hopefully will result in them getting a streamlined process and not, because what, what's at risk because they're in the lower tier, what's at risk is if they're, if they are not pushing the funds out at, at the rate they need to be and they don't sign up for one of these programs, the state could lose funds to states that are actually doing a good job with it.
I'm kind of confused there. We have until the end of, is it 2025 to spend them?
This is, I'm, I apologize.
Are you talking about a program specific?
I, I apologize Supervisor Green Douglas. I'm, I'm referring to the, the funds, so we're talking about, you know, putting some of the ARPA funds to, to help people navigate the system that exists to get money from the state. The state has funds that I think came from the CARES Act, I'm not sure where, what, where they originated, but they've been really slow to respond to all these applications. And so unless, at least my understanding of what I've read is that, that unless they really improve their process, they may actually lose some of those funds to states that have, that have been much better at, at pushing, at, at, at responding to applications.
We're talking about CARES Act money here then, not, not other.
The state is CARES Act, our money to help people.
Okay.
Get it implemented would be ARPA funds.
Well, we have time for the ARPA funds. We don't have to get those out the door right now in fear that they're gonna be scooped.
I think the question is, are we, is the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Don't interrupt. I think maybe just kind of a backup question that I have is, are, are we talking about our eviction prevention dollars are being spent on essentially people and outreach that are still facilitating those state programs? I think that's what Janice is referring to, that we could put some ARPA dollars towards helping, you know, those who are eligible for the state program, make sure they're accessing those funds and, and exhausting those funds. And so maybe we just need to actually talk about, is there something other than that with eviction prevention that we're talking about? I wonder if we could frame it even as like housing stability rather than just eviction prevention. I mean, just as I'm sitting here thinking about it, eviction prevention feels so last ditch. It feels so, you know, everything else has run out and it doesn't address any kind of homeowner help, so.
I know that there is a time to spend this money until 2025, but, and I know that there is some money on the state that we trying to ask, to push people apply for it first. We don't know, like, I, I know that the state extend their, they said until December and after that they extended to next year because they still have money. But we have to think to this in both way. You mentioned that like maybe fund, like fund somebody to help people may, continue apply for IFA. That's one thing, but keep in mind, there is people are not, like they don't want to apply for IFA. They have a lot fear that they don't want to put their information handed to IFA. So that means there is some emergency portion of this fund have to be spent now for those people who are not eligible, not like kind of eligible because now they open the eligibility for everyone, but some people, they just don't want to apply. people, they just don't want to apply for IFA, so they don't want to risk their self. We can, I think we can go in the same, like, yeah, like help people apply for IFA, in the same time allocate some fund for the people who are not eligible for IFA, or they don't want to, not eligible for IFA, or they don't want to apply because of certain situation.
In a better world, I'd agree that it would make a lot of sense to use our much more limited ARPA allocation to help folks apply to IFA. But unless somebody has the ability to bring Director Debbie Durham to God, I think that agency is going to continue dragging its feet. And I think it would be a mistake for us to hope that the state is going to be a partner in good faith with us. They've, they've shown no interest in getting these dollars out the door. I agree that it would be wonderful if we could invest our money as a force multiplier, but I think realistically, we're going to have to look at ways that we can use these dollars ourselves between Iowa City and Johnson County.
Do folks on council have an opinion about some sort of targeted outreach, particularly to Corville and North Liberty, as far as this, this type of effort would go?
I don't see why not. They getting evictions in Corville and North Liberty too.
Yes.
Those same people from Corville and North Liberty are being helped. What did we give? Forty thousand, fifty thousand? We gave out fifty thousand for the eviction, and so we have money allocated for what we have down here is expand the eviction diversion program. And so that's not IFA, that's not nobody having to go to IFA, that's people who have been evicted who need the help right now. So we have money allocated for that.
I'm just kind of thinking that an official request maybe from each entity
Yeah.
would be a good way to make sure it was, got on there in front of the right people. Because it certainly makes sense to me to ask, officially ask.
I think if you got an eviction, you don't need to go to IFA. No, not for an eviction. If you got an eviction notice, this is just this program that's set up for that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm talking about Corville and North Liberty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's not in anybody's interest to have their, have their people out on the street or risk going out into the street.
Yep.
Any more discussion, or Jeff can walk us through the next one?
Okay, well, I think, I think we've probably picked up enough of staff to where we're comfortable working on a proposal that we could bring to both entities. Certainly happy to engage Corville and North Liberty with a formal request as well, to see if they're interested in that. And I think, I think we've got the flavor for, for what you're, what you're looking at there. Item three of four is housing repair and relocation. These are urgent housing matters where there's life safety issues. I know at the city level, we heard a lot of this in our public input efforts. I presume the county did as well, since it showed up on your list. A couple of different things here, and I'm not really sure what, what areas of collaboration, but your discussion may, may help us identify that. For Iowa City, I think we have kind of a two-pronged kind of focus here. We know we have some emergent issues in one particular neighborhood. That's the Forest View neighborhood, where we probably have more relocation needs than, than repair needs based on not only the condition of a lot of those homes, but the overall condition of the larger, the larger neighborhood and the infrastructure that supports it. So we're probably looking at a very focused program in Iowa City to assist the residents in the Forest View neighborhood. But we also know we have urgent housing needs throughout the city. So kind of where we're, what we're thinking at a, at a city level is whether it's one program with a little bit of target towards Forest View or actually two separate programs, kind of that, that viewpoint. I think at the county level, if I understand correctly, you've been talking about aging in place repairs. You've been talking about healthy homes programs. We do have a healthy homes program in Iowa City. It may not exactly align with, with what your thoughts are. But again, if you have a discussion tonight about what you really see at the county level is, is the urgent or need that you want to address with these ARPA funds, I think at a staff level, we'll be able to, to better identify whether there's some collaboration on, on repair and relocation programs. Or it may be that it's just better suited, two different audiences, two different targets, to do them separate. So you see a couple of prompting questions there, but, but hopefully my intro helps. Really just want to hear the elected bodies talk about the housing needs that, that you are thinking of as, as these programs have risen to the top of your list.
The, you mentioned the healthy homes, and that was one of the items that we had identified as potential for collaboration, funding a home repair program that would include lead remediation and promote healthy homes and childhood environments. The other one that you mentioned, Jeff, about aging in place, was targeted more towards rural and aging residents, but doesn't mean that there couldn't be some collaboration as well there.
And that particular one, we would work with local organizations that already do that.
Exactly. Yeah, there are a few that are, in fact, on that.
No discussion?
About the city, city council, is there any, any particular focus that you want us thinking about as we begin program implementation? Are we, from a staff standpoint, do you think we're looking at this correctly with an acute need really in one neighborhood, and then maybe a, a second tier of the program that would be citywide?
I would say yes. But Forest View kind of maybe has its own thing with the immediacy of that need.
Forest View seems to be the most immediate.
Yeah, Forest View is.
I think Tracy Hightew had, has done an amazing job in, in the county and the city with the Healthy Homes project. And I think she would be a good resource and be able to elaborate on that project, because that's been very helpful. And she's collaborated with, I think, the AmeriCorps folks and even the College of Nursing to do some home inspections and some health, health teaching.
Just to clarify, you identified Forest View as needing largely relocation over repair?
Yes.
And then, because the other, the ones I can think of anyway, some of the other mobile home parks are indefinite need of repair. There are lots of them.
I think there is many complaints for broken region and also reagency and as a county level, you know, outside the city limits. So that's something maybe you can't think of too.
But, I mean, but yes, the situation in Forest View is at a different level. Basically, it's very difficult to repair anything there anymore.
Even the, the infrastructure is really bad over there. So I guess we reached the point that people need to relocate.
It, it sounds to me, at least this preliminary discussion, that this may be something that we not collaborate on. It seems like our focus at this point anyway, is rural and aging. And, you know, you have a very specific target. So again, you know, that's, which absolutely is, is fine, but that's what I'm hearing right now.
I, I think so. I mean, certainly to the extent that the relocation for Forest View is a separate thing. Yeah, I wouldn't have the expectation that the county would be supporting that. But, you know, with our staff collaborating and communicating, if we have kind of this second tier program and you all are doing, you know, kind of what you develop, hopefully at least we can share information and see if there is any more opportunities for collaborating once those are a little more formulated.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So I could see on the collaboration is perhaps the monetary amount, because especially mobile homes these days, if they're moving from one to another, are very expensive. And just giving them, you know, fifteen hundred dollars or whatever is, is not going to be a major help. So putting funds together would be helpful in that respect.
About four years ago, they started talking about redeveloping in Forest View. I think you and I were on that together with some CWJ folks. And the developers who were, I don't know, are they still going to develop out there? Because they had said and promised that they would help with the relocation.
I think that's really falling apart now.
It seems, it seems to be a dead letter at this point with serious financial issues.
Yeah.
Okay, because they did relocate that one family that we worked with.
And I, yeah.
Okay. Well, I tend to agree with the, the sentiment there raised by Supervisor Hayden and others, that this is, this is probably one where we have distinct interests and maybe better pursued separate. So thank you for that. Last topic I know has been tops on, on both elected bodies' agendas for many years. Obviously, we have a huge opportunity to accelerate some affordable housing projects. And we thought just an initial conversation here would help. Obviously, we have some time with the ARPA framework to, to make some decisions. But a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, for, for the last couple of years on and off, there's been a little bit of discussion about the county property at 821 South Clinton and the, the potential opportunity to partner city-county on a project that could feature any number of uses, but really focused on public benefit. So we've got listed here some, some ideas that have come up, childcare, could be government office space, permanent affordable housing. That's something that I saw showed up on the county list, that, that it looks like you're going to be actively pursuing with some ARPA funds. We'd love to have that discussion to, to see how we might be able to partner with you on that development. I know you've extended that opportunity to us in the past, and we appreciate that. But as you ramp up, just kind of knowing how you're going to tackle that and whether there's a role for us to play in the coming months is good. And then, we're both contributors to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. We've seen proposals come in from the Affordable Housing Coalition through this process to supplement our funding to that entity to help pursue affordable housing, not only in the city, but throughout the county. So those are a couple of things that we wanted to, to prompt you with today. You may have other ideas outside of those two, certainly on affordable housing projects. I know we've had lots of ideas floated at the city, from community land trusts to active acquisition of new sites to pursue permanent affordable housing. So by no means am I suggesting these are the only two options, but thought that those are two areas that either we're actively partnering on, in the case of the Housing Trust Fund, or that we've discussed partnering on with your county-owned property on Clinton Street. I'll, I'll take it from there, maybe, maybe turn it back over to you. And if we could hear from the county, just kind of some of your thought process on the, on your 821 property, that might be helpful to start us off.
There were a few times when, when we had met together regarding that property, and then we kind of put the brakes on for a while for a number of reasons. Part of it, you know, there's, there's rumor that the city is going to be reconfiguring the streets there, and that really would, you know, be helpful to know how that was going to be done before any kind of project takes place there. The county has also been, has had multiple meetings with the owner of the other part of that property to the west in order to try to reconfigure both owners' properties so that it would be a little bit more of a buildable lot and for us to get some street front. And there were some problems there. Maybe that's somewhere where you guys would have more luck than us. Just getting us some street front there to work with. And I, I thought that at one point too, there were, we did kind of leave it in the staff's hands to look for ways of developing that. So I thought that's where we were on it. Did I, did I miss something?
Well, I think we, we can figure out mechanics in terms of how to move forward. I think hearing kind of some of the thoughts, ideas and visions for that space might, might help us identify exactly how best to pursue that for childcare, certainly affordable housing from a city standpoint. We've got, you know, you're in the riverfront crossing zone, so as this moves from a public designation to potentially a private, if you, if you ultimately seek a, a private partner, there's an opportunity to, to build up quite a bit from what's there too. So we, I think we can explore all those options. Just want to confirm that it appears the county is moving forward with those discussions at this point and, and looking at some ARPA funds maybe to, to jumpstart things.
I, I think it does make sense because it's county property, but right in the city limits for it to be a great opportunity for some sort of collaboration. The talks that I was involved in were considering the bottom part. As you mentioned here, you have a couple of the things, but childcare facility would be an option, and then apartments upward. And the, the thing that we also need to remember is that while we can create some, you know, quite a bit of affordable housing there too, people at the real tip-top might be willing to pay a lot of money for that great view of the river. And so that can be another consideration to have it. Just a multi, multi-layered in terms of folks that would live there potentially.
We're talking about affordable housing, right?
I think mix, mix.
What I'm saying, mix.
Mixing come houses there would be great. So we, I really don't like to see like affordable housing by itself. So like people pointed it as low-income housing. You know, if we can have like multi-incomes, like mixed income, I mean, would be great. Like some, I guess, market price, you know, apartment and some affordable apartment. And yeah.
The county's been considering our campus footprint there recently, and we're going to engage in some renovations of the, of the current area that we have. But there's really, that is pretty much the only available unbuilt space that's out of the floodplain. As you know, from 2008, a lot of county stuff's in the floodplain. So, so we have to get this right. And I think we have to have an eye toward 50 to 100 years, because there's not really a Plan B in the campus area. I mean, we would then be talking about probably, you know, moving some sort of service farther away, and that's not ideal. So whatever we do here, I think we're going to have to think a little bigger than normal. We're going to have to think a little more long-term than, than maybe we always do, because it really is, we kind of have one shot to get it right.
And I think, as my, my colleagues have stated, you know, we're excited about the potential opportunity with Iowa City and, and what that will look like going forward.
Frankly, I think it'd be a huge mistake to not be working with Iowa City on this.
Absolutely.
I don't know exactly how it looks, but I, I sure hope we're partners.
I would love to see mixed housing plus some childcare in there, but, but, but really truly affordable, basically in perpetuity, not the, if, if it's like owned by this, by the city, by the city and county as opposed to like 10, 20, or 30 years. And there is like Supervisor Solas, you're referring to sort of your footprint. I have no idea what's going to happen with the big city carton property, but there is this big chunk of property adjacent to all of that right now that's where nothing's happening.
Open heartlands over there now.
Open heartlands there.
Yeah.
We'll certainly continue to engage the county on that. I think there's a lot of great potential there. And like we said, you know, we've got some time with the ARPA funds. We can, we can work to get that right and make sure that your space needs studies fully considered and that sort of thing. What about other affordable housing efforts? I mentioned the trust fund here. Have, either the council members or board of supervisors, is there anything else that you, you really want your staff to be looking at? is there anything else that you really want your staff to be looking at right now to kind of get jump-started on that larger priority with the ARPA funds?
We did have one other thing in our list. For those of you that have been around long enough, the county many years ago purchased a row of houses across the street from the jail. The thinking was that at some point, there would be some kind of courthouse expansion and/or jail expansion, and that that space might get used. Obviously, that has never happened. The county still owns those houses. And they have been rentals. To be completely honest, we haven't given them as much thought probably as we should over the last few years. And we just recently talked about taking a look at just how, they're old houses. We need to take a look at the efficacy they have going forward. But perhaps just putting them into some kind of, making them affordable housing moving forward. I think the question is kind of twofold. It's what's the long-term picture for that property? And I think the answer is, we have no idea. And then, you know, how good are the houses? Are they worth putting people in? And I guess if the answer is yes, that's a really good short-term use of the houses. So we'd like to think about that. I don't know that the city has any role there except telling Stan Laverman to be really nice.
And two also, we also have on here to provide discounted fares for low-income individuals utilizing public transit. So that's transportation, that's one that we have allocated money to. That, and we would like you to partner with us because Iowa City Transit.
Yeah, that's certainly something that we could talk about. That came up in our council deliberations on ARPA as well. We had kind of tucked that under a workforce category, but it certainly, you know, applies to overall housing costs, just cost of living. So very happy to engage with you on that.
Thank you very much.
The other day, two people just told me, and they said that after they knew I'm in the city council, they said, why the city don't have bus for, like, the mobile homes? And when they identified the mobile home, that was outside the city limit. I don't know if that's something also in your radar. How can we just expand the transportations to cover, like, county places?
I don't know that it comes into the ARPA discussion necessarily, but it certainly impacts that eight twenty-one South Clinton, which is the Crandic rail line is right there. And at the MPOJC meeting tomorrow, we're going to be talking again about the possibility of the Crandic Passenger Rail, at least North Liberty to Iowa City.
Is that Crandic there? I think that.
I think that one is Crandic, yeah, right there.
Mayor Protem, Salih raises a good point about the mobile home courts because two of them that are just kind of on the outskirts of Iowa City, the two that are off of Scott Boulevard are actually county and not the city. And then, of course, the Lakeview or Lakeside, out further on Riverside Drive, is county. So there's three of those that aren't serviced by a city transit currently. But is there something, I think I agree with her, that maybe jointly with the county, we could work out something, some sort of transit system to them?
And just a comment from Councilor Bergerson. And the discussion about Crandic Rail, you know, we have allocated funds to investigate alternative transportation, particularly rail, options in Johnson County. So at this point, you know, we do have funds to work towards that. So be very interested on how that transpires.
I think that transportation is really a huge thing. And when we did our forum, I don't know what you want to call it, the status of poverty in Johnson County, childcare, affordable housing, and transportation spiraled through every aspect of it and had more disproportionate impact on certain populations because of where they live and they're living there because of, you know. So it was just kind of like a catch-22 which came first. But transportation-type things tend to, they need to originate within a city and expand outward. And when they do that, then, you know, we have to provide paratransit wherever you have a fixed route. But currently, to address some of those places outside of city limits, we do have, like, an on-demand seats-type thing. It's not ideal. Certainly, what would be ideal is to have a fixed route that can, with expanded hours, to address people who work second shift, third shift, and that sort of thing, weekends. But it, I think that there's a lot of option for collaboration, but it has to start from within the city because that's the way transportation is funded. Yeah, it's so tricky and multi-layered in terms of funding and such. But I think that there's a lot of willingness for people to say, yes, let's find ways that we can make that happen.
I think definitely for, like, for example, Sunrise and Manaroverzaya, it's still, it's just a Scott Boulevard, and it's still the using the transportation that come, like, by Scott Boulevard, just across the street from them, they can just walk into. But the problem really will be for something like regency or pre-concession, those, the thing. And I really believe it's work of cooperation between the county and the city of doing something like that. So we can include those folks.
So at the risk of mixing apples with oranges, Jeff, do we have any sense how much public transit money is likely to come from the infrastructure bill that was just signed?
No, those details are still kind of filtering out right now. A lot of it will be targeted towards infrastructure and fleet needs. So you're going to see a lot of bus replacement dollars. And then, in our selfish hope, hopefully, facility dollars come through. There are some formula funding opportunities that could impact operations, but it's a little too early to tell what they might produce. Okay, well, I think that's a.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you bet.
I don't know, I don't think the county's ever done any kind of study. Has anybody at the city ever done any kind of study of some of these places just on the outskirts of the city, like a Breckenridge? Has anybody ever tried to gauge the interest in bus service? I don't think we have. But that might be a first step is for us to try to figure out just what kind of interest there is. And I don't know, since you folks have done, you know, you know how fixed route works, maybe if you have surveys that we could take and modify, that would be helpful. We could try to gauge that interest.
Laura, you said you're on MPO.
I am.
And you are.
And I am.
Because didn't they recently do a huge transportation study?
Well, Iowa City, Corahville, and Cambus, all together, those three transit operators did. But I don't think we went outside of those municipal areas.
No, I don't think it would be. I think it's worthwhile. What they asked and how far out they asked it would help us to know where to start and how to make it articulate one with the other.
I think we learned enough through that study and just through our operations to know if you're looking at going out to serve, like, a regency, it's going to be extremely cost inefficient to do so on a fixed route basis. You're probably going to want an on-demand type of service to be able to do that. You know, we have routes that run all the way through Iowa City without having to cross kind of the rural cross-section that are pretty, I don't say inefficient, but pretty costly to run just because of lack of ridership. So I think you're going to see more focus on that demand-responsive model, especially if you're just targeting a specific neighborhood. I think it'll be better from a customer service standpoint. I think it'd be better from a cost standpoint, too. But we can certainly give you some data to help back that thought up.
Well, and the on-demand service through seats does exist currently.
And Jeff, are we still, I feel like the council is going to be getting some additional, like, more defined information about some of those on-demand options for like our late-night and expanded service, so.
So we're on phase three of our transit study implementation. Phase one was kind of fair adjustment and alignment. Two was the route realignment. Three is Sunday service, which we will launch in early twenty, early twenty-twenty-one. I've got my years mixed up. What year is it now?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one and twenty-two, geez. Been a couple of years. And then the fourth phase is that on-demand service. So as we look at on-demand, for us, it was focused on late nights, overnights, kind of third-shift workers, underserved neighborhoods with our current transit system. Perhaps there's some ways to extend that on-demand service out to rural county housing developments.
Well, I just wanted to throw out there, this is the very last one for me. You have community violence intervention. And we also have put some money over to hire a community violence prevention coordinator to design and implement evidence-based approaches to reduce violence.
Now, these are, this last slide, if you didn't catch me flip it, is just some other areas that we've either seen on both lists or perhaps that came up on a city list or a county list that we thought there'd be some other areas. So I appreciate that, knowing that there's an interest there. If you want to discuss these tonight, you can. We didn't really anticipate getting into any of these. It's just an acknowledgement that we have a grant in front of us that we have a few years to put to use. And hopefully, there'll be a lot more opportunities to collaborate than just the three or four that we talked about tonight. Is there anything else from any of the elected officials that you wanted to cover tonight while you're here? We don't get together too often.
I don't know, did we really give you much feedback on the affordable housing part? I guess I just want to say out loud, I am in favor of injecting something, you know, with the Housing Trust Fund. I think they have a really good track record of using and leveraging those dollars and being able to do a lot more than we could on, you know, if we were doing that direct spend. I just want to say that's where I am on that.
If I could just offer, I think one benefit of that now, and I think you're, I know you're going to see this at the city level. I won't go so far as to say at the county level because I don't know. There's only so much in terms of programs that we can stand up so quickly. So if we can identify those trusted partners in the community and allow them to get to work to put some of this money to use, that, to me, that's a huge benefit. Because if it's, we have to wait till we do these first three programs, and then we're going to get to this list, it will take a while to get these dollars out the door. We are going to need partners to help implement. So it's a question of whether you're comfortable making that decision this early on in the, in kind of the granting process. But both the county and the city have been funding the trust fund for years now. I know I've been very impressed with how they've been able to put those dollars to work. And I personally would be very comfortable giving them an initial allocation of ARPA dollars and allowing them and their board and their network to really explore how best to put that to use. It doesn't have to be a huge chunk of dollars right off the bat, right? I mean, you can always supplement that a year down the road, two years down the road with additional funds if you saw fit. But to me, that's a really good opportunity to put some money out in the community and get another entity putting it to work faster than we could at a city staff level.
Well, they certainly have the experience. The county does, we've been giving, since I've been on the board at least, and I think that was the first year, around six hundred and forty thousand dollars annually through a regular budgeting process to the Housing Trust Fund. I feel like that's a substantial amount. And given the requests and need for these ARPA dollars, and I'm not saying this isn't a valid need, but we're doing a substantial amount within that organization already, I think.
And I, too, just want to state that a one-bedroom for nine hundred and forty-five dollars is not affordable housing to me. I will continue to say it, I will continue to push it. A one-bedroom for nine hundred and forty-five dollars is not affordable housing.
Nope. Would agree with you, Supervisor Porter. The one thing that I'd add is sort of looking at, I think we'll know within the next month, month and a half, whether Build Back Better will pass. And with respect to, in particular, with respect to preschool, pre-K for three- and four-year-olds as well as huge investments in childcare. So, I mean, I think within about the next six weeks, we're going to know if that, if funds are going to come our way for that, separate from this.
Anyone else? We appreciate the invitation to be here tonight and really look forward to collaborating and partnering on these programs and projects that are appropriate. So thanks again.
Thank you so much for coming in, and we're going to continue covering for the benefit of the Johnson County residents, yeah.
Thank you for your time and good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, so Mayor Protem, I might suggest we just take five, ten-minute break in the work session and then come back if that's okay with you.
Sure, yeah, we can do that. Five-minute break then. Okay, we're going to go to second item on the work session agenda, which is classification of agenda item. I see here we have item number five F on the agenda CBRB minute, the budget recommendation. Jeff, do you want us to do any like kind of action here?
No, I just wanted to make you aware, sometimes it's, the meeting minutes can get buried in these packets, but the CPRB did forward you a budget recommendation. Staff's intention is to place that in the budget. It is $6,600, so a very small request for outreach to promote their services to the public through a variety of different means. So you can take a look at those minutes and see how they plan to use those. They did not have enough information on the social worker idea. If you remember, they wanted to make available a social worker for folks that file a complaint, and they still need a little bit of time to do that. You know we're putting together the budget now, so we'll incorporate the outreach budget, and once they forward you that proposal, my guess is it'll be several months from now. If you want to amend the budget to include that, we'll certainly work with you to be able to do that. So that was it. I want to call your attention to that item. And then also the three items pertaining to the development on IWV Road, Melrose. We did get a request from the applicant to defer to the next meeting, so I would go ahead and suggest when that item comes up, that you defer. That's certainly your call, you don't have to, but we did get that request just prior to the meeting.
Sure. Okay, about the CBRB, any discussion or you guys agree? Okay. Then we can move to the information bucket discussion, and we will start with October 21 information bucket. Does anyone have anything for October 21 information bucket? Okay, no one. October 28. Okay, November 10. Sorry, November 4th. Maybe I have them all set down.
I did want to just mention.
Can't hear you, John.
Sorry?
I can't hear you, sorry.
I wanted to mention the memo from the police chief, IP2, on the St. Ambrose traffic study. So we're seeing kind of modest improvement in some respects in terms of the disproportional contact. One thing, though, I wanted to comment on was the mapping of where the traffic stops occur. It's pretty, not shocking, but stunning to kind of see how it's concentrated. If you were to take the downtown square mile area and then directly north and directly south of that area and combine them, over 50% of the traffic stops occur in those three square miles. And so I found that kind of interesting. I know that we've been, you know, the focus of this study was on the disproportionate contact, but I've certainly been interested in the question of traffic stops, and what, if anything, can be done to try to reduce the number of traffic stops, especially by implementing a program where we would try to ensure that traffic, at least from a standpoint of traffic safety, better self-regulate. And what I found interesting was, you know, insofar as if we were to consider such a program, over 50% of them are just in that three-square-mile area. So it'd be possible to concentrate our efforts. This is not, traffic stops are not equally distributed throughout Iowa City. So there's an opportunity to do kind of a focused analysis of what's actually going on. Why is it that so many traffic stops are concentrated in those very specific areas? So that, to me, was a takeaway aside from the question of where, how are we doing in terms of disproportionality that I wanted to mention?
I think I can give you a short answer to that, and then we can certainly elaborate it down the road if you want, and if the chief has anything to add, he can come up and do so. We're a very focused department on OWIs. We have a large alcohol culture downtown, and we do 400 to 500 OWI charges per year on average. That's a significant amount. I think if we compared ourselves to other agencies, we do a lot more OWI stops in a given year than most comparable agencies. And certainly with the concentration of alcohol establishments downtown, that's why you're seeing a lot of that. I would venture to guess, I don't have the numbers right in front of me on the report, but probably if you broke that down further, you'd see a high majority of those at night as well. Is that accurate?
Chief Liston, Iowa City Police Department, I would just echo that. Most of our traffic stops are at night, and that is for the reason that the city manager just mentioned. And most of the traffic, certainly at night, are in those areas. That's where the establishments that are open. There are not many people driving around neighborhoods at night, so that's just where the traffic is, is certainly going to be where the traffic stops occur. But I agree with you, there are certain things that we can do, that you all can do. You've done it before on certain roads that do impact that, and I've seen it myself from living here 20 years ago, and then coming back and seeing how the roads are different and notice how that does impact traffic flow.
Right. So, yeah, I'd kind of thought that that certainly would be a contributing factor. But nevertheless, I mean, if we are concerned with those who are driving under the influence, their driving behavior then becomes a concern. Aside from your, you know, the arrest of those drivers, there are many that would not be arrested who are driving under the influence. And if the road conditions are such that they do promote high speeds and volume, you know, the chances of a collision, which is, again, I think, one thing I didn't mention was, if we were to overlay, if we had more precise information of where these stops were taking place, to try to understand to what degree are they, do they, how do they overlay with regard to where the collisions occurred, where we have incidents of, you know, car-on-car, pedestrian, bicycle, you know, collisions with vehicles, and try to identify that as well. So it's, you know, where is it critical that we improve not only safety and disproportionality, but, you know, quality of life and the experience in these areas? Because if it's, you know, if it is where we're seeing a disproportional behavioral factor, that too is something that would be of concern to me. And if it's resulting in not only higher arrests, but higher collisions and so on, I think that's something that could be looked at.
I know the report had a recommendation that we were going to get the exact, or that we should get the exact sort of coordinates of these stops. Is that something we will be able to implement?
Yes, we currently do. With the systems that we have and the vehicles, it gives exact latitude and longitude through GPS. We do.
And so we can correlate that and so the going-forward data?
Absolutely, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anything else for November 4th? Okay, last one, November 10. Okay. Last item, the council update and assigned board and commissions. Anyone can start? Maybe you can start with Kenneth?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's not specifically assigned board, although it might sort of loosely be associated with the CPRB. I wanted to make a, just basically a comment with respect to the process involved in the arrest that took place at City Hall about a week and a half ago. And I'm really, what I'm focused on here is community building and judgment, and what constitutes public safety. Because to me, when faced with a similar situation, I would like law enforcement to look at a non-emergency situation through the dual lens of community building and public safety. So for example, is this person a flight risk? If the answer is no, then you move on. Is there any danger of violence? If the answer is no, you move on. If the answer is no, you move on. Is there any way we can do this, that we will be respectful of this person and the process and not be disruptive or have a chilling effect on others? I think quite often the answer is yes. So for example, can we simply tell this person, hello, you may not be aware of it, but this, this particular issue is out there, and you should go take care of it as soon as possible? I mean, yes, we could. So I, in the interest, truly in the interest of our community and in building community policing, I think first, I think it's really necessary that people that, that police and other law enforcement be as, as aware as possible of what is going on in the community, be aware of the optics, assuming there's not an emergency situation or, or some sense, or some threat of violence, or somebody fleeing. And they need, and they need to think about building relationships as well. So my bottom line is, I'd really like to see them think about what's truly in the interest of public safety and moving the process forward, including community building. And when there's no emergency, when there's no emergency there, it strikes me that there, there ought to be the time and capacity to do that. And that's, so I would really like to, to see improvement in that going forward.
Pauline?
Mayor Pro-Tam Sully and I sit on the Council Rules Committee, and as you saw in item 7D on the consent agenda, we recommended approval of the proposed amendment changes to the Board of Adjustment's procedural rules, and, and that was expanding public notification, and we saw that many times in some of our planning and zoning questions. People questioned whether it was still 300 feet, and for the Board of Adjustment, we, we did accept that 500 feet i- is more, more acceptable to do that, and it's not prohibited by law. Also, that the chair, which it seemed odd, to allow the chair to move or second motions. Apparently, they're just one of a few, maybe one other CPRB or so, that, that that's not allowed, but the chair allowed to second motions. And also for multifamily units, we've seen that with some of our notifications where it goes to the owner of the multifamily complex. And so the residents aren't aware of these changes, and they would be more aware than, than someone perhaps who doesn't even live in the area. So that was another very positive change that, that we approved of.
Okay. John?
Hi.
The Iowa City Area Development Group, ICAD, had their annual meeting a couple of weeks back, and they are continuing to work with the Project Better Together 2030 larger community visioning that is happening. So hopefully, people have heard about that and continue to kind of keep an eye on it, keep a pulse on it as they're moving into additional kind of engagement after a big community event that happened in October. Again, that's not just an ICAD initiative, but they are part of it.
Is this fucking head, are you not going to talk about how the city government is targeting the TRC? Is this, is this all, I mean, Janice, you're complaining about optics. Why isn't, why aren't more of you talking about the ways that ICPB, Chief Liston, are targeting their political opponents?
I, I don't have any things to report on, but I really want to echo what Council Weiner said. I just believe that it was unfortunate what happened, happened the way it happened. And besides building community, this is really are not building the trust among buyback community. Each time we say, oh, you know, we are really starting building that kind of trust, and then, like, someone else asking will come up and really break that trust again and give the, like, the sense for the buyback community that, you know, this is not going nowhere. You know, I, I think we need as a city to really look closely on this, especially as a police department. I hope this is, will be an eye-opening for many things that being happening there and continue to happen to certain people in the community. The discussion for this is not like, this is not, I don't think now this is the time for it, but it have to be, you know, it just have to be like someone else's time to discuss this because we don't have that item on the agenda.
It is, it's a commission.
Okay.
Take your thing and say he's out of order.
It's like, it's, it's a commission.
Please.
The chief is right here. You can ask him about how his officer-
Okay, now, I guess, if nobody else have anything, we have, we're going to adjourn this meeting.
This is fucking bullshit.
Anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned.
Okay, it is 6:00 PM. This is the City of Iowa City formal meeting. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 16th City Council formal meeting. The first item is roll call. Roll call please.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Okay, before we begin the meeting, I would like to say thank you on behalf of the City of Iowa City to the City Manager, Jafruan, and on behalf of the Mayor, Bruce Teague, the Mayor of Iowa City, to present the certificate of recognition for 10 years of dedicated service. Your many years of services are true testimony of your hard work, commitment, and dedication to the City of Iowa City, and you are truly valued for all that you do, and it will be my honor to present you with this certificate. Okay, item number two is proclamation. The first proclamation is National Native American Hallelujah Month. Whereas long before European settlers colonized the Americas, Native Americans, Alaska Native and Native Hawaiians, and the indigenous people of this continent maintain thriving societies based upon principle, we recognize today as to be immolated and reclaimed, among them sustainability and community. And whereas while Native American, Alaska Native, Native Hawaiians, and indigenous people around the world in this country and the state of Iowa have suffered from and continue to strongly advocate and organize against colonization and reassured carried outward by the United States, native communities have nevertheless counted, continued to contribute in countless ways to the success of the country, and where less examples of native nation include but are not limited to the Rogers Confederacy of which early Americans attempted to model US democracy after and of which influenced the writing of the US Constitution, or the countless native nation who helped dispersed early settler avoid starvation and learn to survive on this land whose geography and agriculture was foreign to them. Also, the co-toker of World War I and World War II with Native American population today continuing to hold the highest per capita involvement in the military and Mary Gaulta Ross, the first female Native American rocket scientist who began working for Lockheed in 1942, and the first and the current Native American Secretary of the Interior, Deb Hernand, and countless scholar, athlete, and spiritual leader and mentioned. And whereas we honor the 574 federally recognized tribal nation that continue to thrive here in their homelands, we seek to understand their complex and disparate cultures, language, and histories, as well as indigenous nation and people that were devastated or remain unrecognized due to our nation's continued legacy of the colonization. We recognize the legitimacy and the continued effort of these nation to strength and restoring tolerance and diversity both within salvoing nations and across the society of the United States. Now, therefore, I Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Brutam of Iowa City, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November 2021 to be National Native American Hallelujah Month. Is anyone here to accept? Second item is also proclamation for the Preservative Nurse Week, and this will be read by Pauline Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Pratam Saleh. As a retired perioperative nurse, I am honored and pleased to read the following proclamation. Whereas perioperative nurses specialize in the care of patients immediately before, during, and after surgical and other invasive procedures, and whereas serving in settings ranging from traditional hospital-based operating rooms to ambulatory surgery centers and physicians' offices, perioperative nurses work to provide the safest care possible for patients undergoing surgical and other invasive procedures. And whereas perioperative nurses assess individual patient needs prior to and throughout the surgical or invasive experience, develop, implement, and continuously evaluate a plan for the care of the patient, and prepare the operating room and patient for their procedure. And whereas perioperative nurses are responsible for monitoring all aspect of the patient's condition for the duration of each procedure, and through professional and patient-centered expertise are responsible for care coordination after the procedure, and whereas patients undergoing surgery and other invasive procedures and their loved ones rely on the skills, knowledge, and expertise of perioperative registered nurses who uphold a long tradition of improving surgical safety and the quality of patient care. And whereas perioperative Nurse Week recognizes the contributions perioperative registered nurses make to patient safety and the opportunities and challenges facing the profession. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Pratam of Iowa City, and Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim November 14th through 20th, 2021, Perioperative Nurses Week in Iowa City, and urge community members to join me in honoring the perioperative nurses at the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, Mercy Iowa City, and Iowa City Veterans Affairs for their time and commitment to patient care. And accepting is a dear friend and longtime colleague of mine, Rhonda Price, from the Association of Operating Room Nurses.
I just want to say a brief thing about perioperative nurses, operating room nurses, that just to let you know that we are always there for you, caring for you at all times, from the beginning to the very end of your surgery, and to know that we are always doing our best, even during these trying times and the amount of nursing shortages that are occurring everywhere, the ones that are here and trying, we are doing our very best and proud of helping and serving you people. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number two, see Transgender Day of Remembrance, and this will be by Council Weiner.
Whereas transgender people come from all walks of life and make up a part of a diverse community representing all racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds, and whereas transgender individuals around the world and in the United States are exposed to widespread social stigma, discrimination, harassment, and physical and sexual abuse, and whereas the city recognizes the increasing rate of deaths by violence of transgender individuals nationwide, and the disproportionate effects of this against transgender women of color, and whereas our entire community is diminished when we lose the talents and contributions of any member of our community prematurely, whether due to direct anti-gender, anti-transgender violence, or due to suicide or other health effects resulting from trauma or discrimination. And whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance began in 1999 as a vigil to honor the memory of Rita Hester, a transgender woman who was killed in 1998, and to raise awareness of hate crimes against transgender people. And whereas the Human Rights Campaign statistics show that 80% of anti-transgender homicide victims are transgender women of color, making the tragedy of anti-transgender violence especially heartbreaking in Black and Latino communities. And whereas the City of Iowa City honors the bravery and resilience of transgender individuals who live, work, or play in this city in their authentic gender, and although we are proud of the existing legal protections we have for transgender individuals to pursue their lives free from discrimination in Iowa City, we reaffirm a commitment to ongoing efforts to promote full inclusion of transgender individuals. And whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to diversity, social justice, equity, and mutual respect, and safety of those a part of this community. Therefore, on behalf of Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Pratam of Iowa City, and Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby declare November 20th to be Transgender Day of Remembrance in Iowa City. And accepting this declaration, I believe, are Talia Meidlinger and Jamie Ellis.
If you want to say anything. If you want to say.
I am just honored and grateful to live in a community that supports all identities and walks of life, and we show our young people here who volunteered to show up to this late at night community meeting that they really don't know much about, and, and we are honored to accept this award and to live in a community that supports our young people and all different identities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 2D Sudan Proclamation of Support. Whereas Iowa City population include a significant number of immigrants and refugee from Sudan, and whereas most of Sudanese-American resident have immediate family members and friends who still live in Sudan, and whereas our Sudanese-American residents are very disturbed by the attempt military coup in Sudan which dissolved the civilian power shared transitional government embraced since 2019, and whereas the Sudanese military leader whose society power have attacked anti-coup civilian protester with deadly force, and whereas our Sudanese-American resident have called upon Sudan coup letters to restore civilians' rules and to respect the people's right to freedom of assembly, association, and expression of guaranteed in international laws and the UN treaties ratified by Sudan, and whereas the City Council of Iowa City support the city's Sudanese-American residents' effort to improve situation, protect protester, and ensure a democracy and prosperity Sudan. Now, therefore, I Mazahir Mayor Brutam of Iowa City, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby express Iowa City's support for all reasonable offer to improve the situation in Sudan and to ensure, to ensure that the human right of the families and friends of the Sudanese-American residents are respected. Here to accept is Ali Ahmed and Badr Kuku from the Sudanese Community Association.
Councils, this is a tremendous moment today to come and first of all to say congratulations for the previous elections. Now, we have a council and we have a mayor. Audience, I am a Sudanese-American who fled from Sudan since 1999. This document means a lot and will remind me actually since January 1st, 1863, when Abraham Lincoln issued for the freedom. I don't have a lot to add for what Mazahir Saleh, Mayor Pro team alleged. She talked about what's happening in Sudan. What we only need, we need to stop the hijacking of the democracy and let the democracy prevail. Thank you very much.
Bakhit Alkamil. On behalf of Sudanese community in Iowa City, I would like to express our great appreciation for the City Council proclamation on support for the Sudanese community in Iowa City and our deep concern for the well-being of our families and the people of Sudan. We encourage your efforts to make our voices heard. Your voice can make a difference, can save life, ensure and safeguard the right to assemble Your voice can make a difference, can save life, ensure and safeguard the right to assembly and peaceful protest as a universal right for all people and can in no way be compromised. Support the unbreakable will of the Sudanese people, inspiration for democracy, peace, and prosperity. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is special presentation from the UCI Jangle Cross World Cup Cycle Cross Race, but unfortunately, we receive, you know, notice from the person, he's not unable, from Josh, he's not able to attend tonight, and we request to defer this to the next meeting. So, we don't need any vote for that, right? Now, item number... Now the consent agenda, we're gonna, I would like a motion to approve the item four to nine for the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Move by Wyner, second by Taylor. Public discussion for the only, the item from four to nine, consent agenda. Is there anyone who want to speak about this item? Please sign your name and you have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Megan Alter, and I'm a resident, nine thirty-six Aspen Court in the South District, and I just wanted to say thank you for setting things in motion to get the South District self-supported municipal improvement district going. I think it's a really important step to revitalize that area, and I'm extremely pleased that that's in motion.
Okay. Council discussion about consent agenda. Okay, then roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague. Thomas.
Yes.
Wyner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims. Saleh.
Motion basis five to zero. Do I have to say the people who are absent or did that?
I'm sorry?
When I say motion basis five to zero, do I have to mention people absent?
No, that's fine.
That's fine.
Domain noted.
Five to zero. Okay. Now it is time for the public comment. Please limit your comment to three minutes. There is a sign sheet behind the podium. Please make sure to put your name there. If you put your name on the sticker, put the sticker on the basket, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and where you live beside, please make sure to limit your comment to three minutes. And now, anyone can come speak at this time. Welcome, just please state your name.
I'm Emily Alservis, interpreter, unless there's one here. And then the first request is, is it possible to have more time for non-English speaking folks?
I think normally we double the time for, yeah. You can do that.
Hola buenas noches, mi nombre es Ninozka Campos, soy líder de la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa City.
Good evening, my name is Ninozka Campos, and I am one of the leaders of the Excluded Workers Fund.
Estamos aquí presentes como hemos estado en todas las reuniones del condado y de la ciudad.
We're here present, just like we have been in all of the county meetings and city meetings.
Para exigir y dejar saber que esta fue nuestra lucha y esta es nuestra lucha.
But I remind everyone and insist that this has been our fight and this is our fight.
Y como representante de la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa queremos decirles que queremos trabajar directamente con el condado del Johnson County.
And as one of the leaders of the Excluded Workers Fund, I'd like to tell you all that we want to work directly with the county of Iowa City.
No queremos trabajar...
The county of Johnson. We want to work directly with the county of Johnson County.
No queremos trabajar con ninguna otra organización por mucha más experiencia que tenga.
We don't want to work with any other organization, no matter how much experience they may have.
No queremos trabajar con el centro de justicia laboral.
We do not want to work with Center for Worker Justice.
Preferimos trabajar con los del condado directamente.
We would prefer to work with Johnson County directly.
Porque esta es nuestra lucha y nosotros sabemos las necesidades que hay con las personas excluidas de Iowa City.
Because this is our fight and we know the needs of the people of Iowa City and the Excluded Workers Fund Coalition.
Mi pregunta es, ¿por qué antes de comenzar esta lucha no se unieron con nosotros?
My question is, when we started this fight, why didn't they join us?
Ahora es fácil venir y querer meterse a la lucha de nosotros.
Right now, it's easy to come and get involved in the fight that we've been doing.
Nosotros no queremos ninguna discriminación que hasta el momento ha habido con la gente latina. Nosotros no queremos ninguna discriminación para la gente latina.
We don't want to face any discrimination.
Por eso somos sinceros y la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa prefiere trabajar directamente con el condado.
We are serious about this and we would like to work directly with the Johnson County.
No queremos tanto protocolo, no queremos que en una aplicación pidan tantas cosas.
We don't want that, we don't want it to be cumbersome, we don't want a lot of things being asked for the application.
Esto no sería ayuda, señores, esto fuera poner barreras a las personas.
That would not be help, that would be putting up more barriers.
Hemos sido lo suficientemente capaces para sacar la economía de Iowa City adelante durante fue la pandemia.
We have been very good at lifting up and working, lifting up the economy in Iowa City during the pandemic.
Así queremos que a cada persona se le llegue esta ayuda.
We want this help to reach every person.
No queremos ir a una institución de que nos dicen que nos van a llamar por teléfono y hasta el día de ahora estamos esperando la llamada telefónica.
We don't want to go to an institution where they say they will call us and they don't and we're still waiting.
O que cuando uno llame por teléfono le digan que la aplicación no se subió al sistema y que se perdió.
Or that the application was lost and this didn't get uploaded and was lost.
Así que nos sentimos más seguros trabajar con los miembros del condado.
We would like to, we would feel more certain if we could work directly with Johnson County.
A nosotros ninguna organización nos preguntó cuando la pandemia si estábamos bien o estábamos mal.
None of these organizations asked us during the pandemic if we were okay or if we were doing bad.
Y nosotros hicimos los trabajos más pesados en los hoteles, en las carreteras, en diversos trabajos.
And we did the hardest work in the hotels, out in the streets.
Ustedes se han puesto a pensar alguna vez en algún momento de su vida si el pueblo latino se fuera un paro nacional.
Have you ever thought about in your life if the Latino community just stopped, like throughout the nation just stopped working?
En una empresa hay maquinarias pero necesitan personas para trabajarlas.
Lots of different companies, factories, they need people to work in them.
Ustedes son personas inteligentes, supieran cuántos millones perdería este país si nosotros los latinos no fuéramos un paro nacional tan siquiera de un día.
You all are very smart, intelligent people. I think you would realize what would happen if the Latino workers stopped in the country.
Así que yo vengo aquí delante de ustedes sin miedo porque nosotros somos las personas que sacamos adelante este país.
That's why I come here in front of you, to ask for this help without fear, because I know that we carry, carry this country.
Así que como representante de la coalición de trabajadores excluidos de Iowa queremos que si esta ayuda va, preferimos trabajar el condado que trabaje con nosotros y no queremos otra institución.
So, if this money does go through, we would like to work directly with Johnson County, not with other institutions.
Eso es todo, gracias.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address, please.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The name and the address, please. State his name and his address.
You want him to say it?
His name.
You want him to say his address as well?
Yeah, where you live, Iowa City, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes.
Yes, address and name.
Name and address, please, yeah.
Hola buenas tardes, mi nombre es Leonel Ángel González.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Loen.
Leonel.
Uh-huh, Loen.
Ángel.
Ángel.
González.
González.
Three thirty-two friendship.
Three thirty-two, three thirty-two friendship?
Yes.
Is that it?
Welcome, yeah.
Bueno, como estaba comentando mi compañera, yo vengo a decirle o a pedirles que queremos trabajar directamente con el condado.
Just like my friend here said, I'm here to ask you that we would like to work directly with the county.
Y no queremos otras instituciones que se metan en esto. Lo único que pedimos es que trabajemos con el, directamente con el condado.
We don't want other institutions to get involved in this. We, what we're, the only thing we're asking is to work directly with the county.
Porque nuestra confianza está en ellos más que nada, confiamos en ellos. En otra institución no confiamos. La cosa es de que, que se haga todo bien, lo es todo lo que pedimos.
We have trust in them, our confidence is in them, and that's what we're asking.
Bueno, es todo lo que puedo pedir en esta noche o tardes, y pues a todos ustedes, lo único que pido en esta tarde, que trabajemos directamente con el condado de Iowa. Muchas gracias.
That's all I'm going to ask for tonight in this moment, is that you work directly with Johnson County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome. Fatimah Said. Your address? Twenty-five thirty-two Bartlett Road, Iowa City, Iowa, five-two-two-four-six. Welcome. I'm here tonight to thank you, Iowa, for opening your doors, for opening your schools, your hospitals, and give us second chance to live. I'm here just to ask a favor, because we've been going and making peace around this town for a long time. We've been making peace for everybody. We sing together. We have good times together to make this community a better place to live. But tonight, I ask for a favor. Can we make peace for Sudan? Can we consider these young people get shut down and gunned down because they asking for bread and democracy? Because they looking for a peaceful place to sing, to play. These children get gunned down because they just would like to live. We asking for dignity, safety, and peace for these people in Sudan. We've been making peace here in Iowa. Can you help me make peace and stop these people being genocide? People in their for, for a long time, for three, four decades, the same people bringing this genocide to capital Khartoum and keep killing these young people, keep making Sudan miserable place to live. Can you help me, please, to bring peace to Sudan and the children of Sudan can sing for the rain, for the peace, and for happiness? I just ask you, please, we need to stop this genocide being going for decades in Sudan and the same people, the same people, the same people keep doing the same terrible thing for the people of Sudan. Please, please, Iowa. In Iowa, I have my people, I have my friends. We sing together. When we go to school, kind teachers always help me. When I get sick, kind doctors always help me. We sing together, we laugh together, we live in peace, we live together. Muslim, Christian, and Jewish, we live in peace, we live together. Can you help me carry these values over there to support people who's dying in the streets asking for bread and democracy? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, please say your name and your address.
Mi nombre es Rosalba Gudiel Morataya.
My name is Rosalba Gudiel. Gudiel?
Morataya.
Morataya.
Twenty-one, twenty-eight, South Riverside, Laura Dry.
Welcome.
Fifty-two, twenty-four-six. Estoy aquí representando a los trabajadores excluidos.
I'm here representing the excluded workers.
Necesitamos trabajar con el condado, no con las otras organizaciones de, la otra organización, ¿cómo se llama? De laboral, trabajadores laborales, ¿cómo es que se llama? Queremos trabajar con el condado, no con otras organizaciones.
We're here to tell you that we'd like to work directly with Johnson County, not with other organizations.
Porque es una lucha, como dijo mi amiga, que hemos hecho juntos.
It's a fight, just like my friend said, that we've done together.
Y no es justo que alguien venga, de que ya han dado el sí de lo que hemos luchado para esta ayuda económica.
Otra vez, no es justo.
No es justo que ya te haga aprobado la ayuda y que otro venga y quiera él salir adelante.
It's not just that we, it's not just justo that we get the money and then someone else comes to get the help, or, que no es justo, excuse me, que ha probado ayuda y otros...
Quieren venir.
Oh, it's not just that we've, you know, finally got to this point, we've got the money and that others come and want to come in at this point.
Somos trabajadores que hemos trabajado en la pandemia y hemos arriesgado nuestra vida y nuestra familia de contagiarnos.
We're workers that have fought during the pandemic and we, that risked our lives and our families among COVID, we could get contaminated.
Y no hemos recibido un reembolso de un cheque del gobierno hasta hoy con esta lucha que estamos haciendo.
And we haven't received any kind of money or stimulus check until today, right, during this fight.
Necesitamos de su apoyo, que nos ayuden para trabajar con el condado. Necesitamos de su apoyo, que nos ayuden para trabajar con el condado.
We need your help so that you help us work directly with the county.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ingrid Jacqueline Ochoa.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ingrid Jacqueline Ochoa.
Your address, please.
Twenty-four eighty-two Lakeside Drive.
Twenty-four eighty-two Lakeside Drive.
Welcome.
Bueno, yo estoy aquí hoy para pedirles de por favor que si ustedes nos pueden apoyar para poder trabajar con el condado porque la verdad de las cosas que otras organizaciones no nos han apoyado.
We're here today, I'm here today to ask you to support us to work directly with the county because the truth is, other organizations have not been supporting us.
Bueno, hablo por experiencia propia porque dos veces me ha dado COVID y he puesto aplicación y simplemente hasta el día de hoy sigo esperando respuesta.
I talk from experience. I've gotten COVID twice. I've put in applications and I'm still waiting to this day.
Y la verdad de las cosas que esta lucha ha sido de nosotros, de todos nosotros.
And the truth is, this fight has been ours, all of ours.
Y por eso estoy aquí para pedirles a ustedes como seres humanos que piensen y toquen un poquito su corazón para que podamos trabajar con el condado de Johnson. Es todo lo que les pedimos. Buenas noches.
And that's why I'm here tonight to ask you as human beings to look into your heart and help us. We ask you that we work directly with Johnson County. Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Pat Bowen. I live at twelve-ten Village Road in Iowa City. And I'm here tonight, and I've been here before, this public body before. It's been a long six months since we've realized we're able to get this ARP money. All of us have been hit hard by the COVID pandemic. These people that have come up before me have been hit harder than most of us, as you can probably tell why from their stories. Many of these frontline workers, though, have been excluded and left out of the pandemic relief measures in the past. Together with Johnson County, Iowa City is getting together. They're getting nearly fifty million dollars in federal funds through this American Rescue Plan to help people recover from the pandemic. This includes people, like these essential workers that have stood here before you tonight and past nights. These are immigrant workers who've been hurt the most and have risked the most to keep our community going. Direct aid and hazard pay should go directly to the essential frontline workers and it should be a streamlined application process, so the aid goes directly to the people. They only need to show proof of residency, proof of identity, and self-certification of need. That is all that is needed. We need to get this money in their hands. We've had this money for six months. And cash payments should go directly from the government to the people without any third party. There is already a structure in place, and using a third party would only complicate and delay the delivery of the money that has been sitting idle for months. It would also be ill-advised use of taxpayer money to pay a third party to do this delivery of money. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Emily Senra. I live out at thirty-five Northwest Munster Street here in Iowa City. Excluded workers want to go down to the county building to get their check. Before making your decision, I want to remind you of state law and the city's conflict of interest policy. Quote, "Policy." Iowa law requires that a public employee have complete loyalty to the public when entering contracts on behalf of their employer. City employees therefore must follow Iowa's conflict of interest laws when entering contracts on behalf of the city of Iowa City. Iowa Code Section three-six-two-point-five says that city employees shall not have a direct or indirect interest in any contract, job, or sale that is entered into or services that are performed for the city. A city employee has a direct interest in a contract when either the city employee has an employment interest or an ownership interest in the business providing the good or service to the city. City employees have a responsibility to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest. Even an appearance of a conflict of interest. Hang on, I'm not done. According to the U.S. Census Bureau data, there are twenty-five hundred excluded immigrant men and women, children in Johnson County, or about twelve-hundred-and-fifty excluded working adults, not six-hundred. Even if Iowa City matched dollar-for-dollar Johnson County's committed pledge of two million, a four-million excluded workers fund would only be enough to deliver aid of three-thousand-two-hundred dollars to twelve-hundred-and-fifty excluded adult men and women. A far cry from the fifteen thousand most excluded workers lost in unemployment compensation and completely leaving out excluded children whose counterparts received twenty-five hundred in stimulus payments since the pandemic began. The Johnson County General Assistance Program is the best available vehicle to effectively and efficiently distribute the aid to impacted workers, provided that proof of identity, proof of residency, and a self-certification is needed is the only paperwork required to access the fund. A self-cert should ask simple questions. For example, were you and your spouse laid off? Did you and your spouse both receive unemployment insurance for layoffs? Did you receive all three federal stimulus checks, et cetera? Our seventeen-group coalition stands ready to assist Iowa City and Johnson County in organizing a series of Sunday clinics to identify and distribute all the available aid to excluded workers in just a few short weeks. This coordination will increase trust between the immigration, the immigrant community, and local government, if it is done correctly and in accordance with the repeated demands of the excluded workers themselves. This method will also prevent even the appearance of a conflict of interest with any potential third party who may have a vested financial interest in the distribution of the excluded workers fund.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome. Please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Noah. I live in Iowa City. So first off, I'm just gonna, just another person saying fund excluded workers, not the embarrassing low four, two million amount combined that actually, I mean, at least like combined you do at least fifteen million is the bare minimum y'all should be doing, not the current one and a half million proposal from the city. And to do it through the county, like they are asking to, you know, first off, save taxpayers' money and not do it a very corrupt, clearly will, even if it's not corrupt, you know, this corrupt, appears to be corrupt transaction, they're going through a third party. So yeah, secondly, don't be quiet about your cops doing political arrests in the city. Actually, do something about it. The bare minimum y'all should be doing is calling for all officers involved to be fired immediately. That is unacceptable to have political arrests in this so-called democracy. That's disgusting. Like y'all, y'all just gonna be silent about that? Or give statements about the optics of it and just only care about that, not the clearly targeted? Anyways, okay. Thirdly, this is accessibility, which is not happening in this city, and I asked y'all about this. Y'all always like telling me to ask you, to ask you questions outside the meetings since you can't public comment. So I do that, and y'all still ignore me. Momo suicides you and Bergus. And Sli, I talked to you before the meeting. I understand why you did not, but the rest of you have no excuse. So why does the city not provide hybrid meetings? So am I just never gonna get answered from the city? I could do this all day. So, no answer, just total silence?
Thank you, Noah. Thank you.
I would like an accessible meeting.
Anyone else? I think now we are in the end of the public comment. I'm gonna move on to item number eleven. Planning and zoning matter. Eleven A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Fringe Area Agreement. Resolution to amend the comprehensive plan and approve twenty-eight E fringe area policy agreement between Johnson County and the city of Iowa City. I'm going to open the public hearing. And now staff presentation. Dinah?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. So this agenda item is a culmination of several years of work by staff and some previous presentations that we've given you about an update to the area, the fringe area agreement between Johnson County and the city of Iowa City. So I'm gonna give a brief refresher on what fringe area is, remind you how we got here, the steps that we've taken to get to this point for this agenda item tonight, and then a little bit about what the agreement includes. Included at your seats is a handout, which will be part of the presentation, but I realized was really difficult to see in here, so I gave you also a copy of that. So what is a fringe area and a fringe area agreement? State law establishes a two-mile boundary outside of a city's boundaries in which the city has some control over what kind of development happens there, primarily through the subdivision approval process. The county still has control over zoning and the designation of uses, but the city essentially has a veto power when it comes to the actual subdivision of land. Alternatively, governments such as the city of Iowa City and the county can come to some other agreement in lieu of that baseline through a twenty-eight-year agreement in which they lay out an alternate path of working through the development, land development process between the two jurisdictions. Both the city and the county do have a mutual interest in coming to an agreement such as this to provide for the effective and economic and efficient development of land and to respect sensitive areas and features within that boundary. So how did we get here? The city has had a longstanding fringe area agreement with the county going back to the early nineties. Our current fringe area agreement has recently expired. It was in place from October two thousand and six to October of two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and eighteen, the county formally requested that we refresh that agreement, and staffs have been working together to do that and bring the proposed agreement forward to you tonight. As a reminder, in two thousand and twenty, January, staff did present you with our build-out analysis, which was a component of the analysis that went into some of the foundational work of this agreement. And to just refresh a little bit about what was in that build-out analysis when we presented it to you. Basically, we looked at the boundaries of the growth boundary area that had been established previously in previous documents to determine whether that boundary was still an accurate reflection of where the city thought growth would occur and that the city would eventually build out to in the timeframe that the fringe area agreement is intended to cover. The fringe area agreement is intended to cover twenty or thirty years worth of growth. And based on the previous studies that the city had conducted about the capacity for providing infrastructure such as sewer and water, that leaves the groundwork for that growth area boundary. And then we wanted to make sure that that was still a reasonable boundary to be working with and to look at current trends in growth of population and growth of economic areas in and around the city. The study ultimately confirmed that we do have enough capacity in that vacant and underutilized land, both within the city for development and within that, the boundary identified as the growth area outside the city. But there were five additional areas that we studied and actually added into that growth area. And I'll go through those briefly here as well. A little bit about what the proposed agreement includes. It kind of reorients the focus to that growth boundary being the designation of whether the components of the process that the city and county will go through are determined by whether the land under discussion in each individual application falls inside or outside of the city's growth area. And then tailors the appropriate actions depending on whether land is located in one of those two areas. Essentially, it gives authority to the city for the areas within the growth area and gives more control to the county for areas outside of that growth area where the city does not anticipate growing in the fringe area horizon. There are some exceptions to that, and those are the subareas that are included in the agreement. Basically, we're areas where the city's comprehensive plan will serve as a basis for making determinations in those areas. And there are five subareas, as I mentioned, that were explicitly looked at as the city and the county talked about these areas. So despite the build-out analysis, there were still some additional areas that needed to be scrutinized because they were important areas in and around the city for other reasons besides basic infrastructure. They tended to function as gateways, were places where highway adjacency was important. There was still some considerations about infrastructure and future growth, and then also sensitive areas. So those areas were added to the growth area. Now, just a little bit of a preview again about the inside and outside designation and the city's control versus this county's control. If something falls within, within or inside the growth boundary, it's subject to this urban design standards, which is essentially the city's subdivision regulations. So when we talk about in this agreement urban design standards or rural design standards, the urban design standards are really the ones that are focused on city-like development. And those things include streets, layouts, and circulation, the way stormwater is handled, and things like erosion control and fire safety. So let's get to the map. So this shows the city at the center, surrounded by a ring of darker and lighter gray areas. The darker gray areas are those areas that the city anticipates future growth occurring in as the city, so annexation essentially in the city's boundaries moving outwards. And the lighter gray areas are outside of what we anticipate growth would occur in, in a city-like manner. And then the hashed areas are those five additional subareas that I mentioned. Starting on the southwest corner side of the city, I'll kind of go through this briefly. In this drawing, you can see the darker gray outline and then some green highlights. The far right rectangle there is what was already in the previous agreement, and the two aligned green areas are added as part of this additional agreement with the county. This shows you the zoning, or this shows you what the county's anticipated uses were for those areas. It's expressed in their comprehensive plan. So you can see here those areas in pink and purple and yellow were added into this agreement, basically so that any development that occurs there occurs to city standards. Moving counterclockwise to the south of the city, this triangle here again was an area that was added beyond what the inside-outside designation would have added. But again, this is one of those areas along two-eighteen that functions as a gateway. It's also designated as for commercial development by the county as a use, and so we wanted to ensure that city standards were really the rule when that does, development there does occur. Continuing to move counterclockwise, Subarea Three is an industrial, an area adjacent to the city's industrial park. And again, there's no actual development planned here by the county, but it's just ensuring that an asset of the city is protected, future industrial growth can continue. And so again, another kind of unique feature that was incorporated into the agreement. Subarea Four, as we continue to go counterclockwise, is now on the northeast corner of the city. This is an area along Interstate eighty. Here, this shows the uses designated again by the county's comprehensive plan, primarily commercial. Some things are already zoned there for commercial, so this is already very well-established as a commercial gateway. But again, incorporating it into the area that the city would have more influence over. And the fifth area is directly north of the current city limits along North Dodge Street. This is a tiny. This is a tiny, a very small strip of land, really as a buffer between city and county rural development, just again to ensure more city influence, showing it here kind of in that larger future land use plan map. So this is the handout that's at your desk. I wanted to give it to you so you could see it a little bit better, but it's meant to highlight the process and the inside-outside designation that I've been mentioning. It lays out on the left-hand side of the screen the various steps in the development process for land. So working from the top to the bottom on the left-hand column, you would see annexation, then rezoning, which is a designation of use, then the steps in the subdivision process for preliminary and final planning, then finally the, excuse me, site planning, and then I may have skipped this step at the top, which is actually the development of those plans that I've been mentioning, like the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan massed by the county. So in the peachish, orangish color is the rules that would be adopted in this fringe area agreement for the treatment of those steps of the development process when land falls within that boundary that's been established as the city's growth area. So along the next set of columns, it shows you the level of review and the timing of that review, starting with typically staff, then proceeding through the city's planning and zoning commissions, then on to this body of city council, and then also including the county's similar processes where their staff reviews something, their planning and zoning commission makes recommendations, and the board of county supervisors makes decisions. So boxes that are lightly colored are stages in which those groups are making recommendations and kind of spiraling those recommendations up to the final deciders. The darker color boxes are where the final decision gets made. So in pretty much everything except annexation, where we have the final say in whether something comes into or out of the city, these processes flow from left to right and include, for the most part, a final determination by the county. However, you can see there are some stages where the city then has more control, and those are the subdivision stages, where unless the city also is approving a subdivision, it cannot proceed on to the county. So that's pretty standard and similar to what the county, or sorry, what the state enabling legislation would say. However, there are some things that have been added here to this process and this version of the fringe area agreement, and those are those boxes shaded or bounded in yellow. And that's meant to represent things that are new in this agreement and that are essentially adding to what the city has control and comment over. So what they're really showing here is that the city has become more involved upfront in a lot of these decisions, so essentially having more say in how the county formulates its, or more involvement really, in how the county formulates its long-range plans and making sure that we're plugged into that process. And then also clarifying the difference between the city and the county's definitions of how large a subdivision is. And the county used a different, uses a different definition of a smaller subdivision when it's three or less lots. So this is actually bringing those smaller subdivisions into review and recommendation and final decision by the city when they fall within the city's growth area. You shift to the right-hand side of this table, the blue area, very similar color coding for when something's a recommendation, when something's a final decision. The things that are bounded in red are the processes the city's taken a step back from being involved in. So we would no longer be involved in some of these stages of development when they fall outside the area that the city is concerned primarily about the weight and style of growth. So in these cases, there might be still some notification that the city receives that these actions are occurring at the county, but for the large part, the city is not making a recommendation at the planning and zoning commission, and those cases would no longer be coming to city council. So that's a lot of information, but this was something that I found really helpful as we started to talk about all of this and think about how this would work in the future, so I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Any question for Danielle from the council?
Okay, because this is a 28E agreement and is adopted as part of the city's comprehensive plan, it gets used to review applications. The comp plan gets referenced. So in order to adopt this new fringe area agreement and then therefore there would need to be a change to the comprehensive plan, which is why this agenda item is presented in this way. Whenever we review something for a comprehensive plan amendment, we go through a review of certain criteria. Two criteria, in fact, whether circumstances have changed to warrant this change to the comp plan, and whether the proposed amendment will be compatible with other policies and provisions of the plan itself and any district plans or amendments thereto. Staff worked very hard to craft this agreement to uphold the ideals of our comprehensive plan, to ensure that the city's style of development is the primary way that the city can grow within those boundaries closest to our current city limits and the anticipated growth boundary. So we do feel that these criteria have been met. As far as next steps, again, I show this to you most times. This is a little complicated because this is a mutual agreement, so the county is going through this process as well. They have already reviewed the proposed fringe area agreement, both at their planning and zoning commission and at their county board of supervisors in October. It is coming to you from our planning and zoning commission with the recommendation of approval. P&amp;Z did review this on October 7th with a vote of 5 to 0. They are recommending approval to you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions.
Yes, a lot of information. I saw you don't have way. Any question for the staff?
I just thank you for laying it out so clearly. Appreciate it.
Okay, now it's public discussion. Would anyone from the public would like to discuss this item? If you do, please come to the podium and state your comment. I see no one. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, I would like to, if somebody can give me a motion to approve?
So moved, Thomas?
Moved by Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Second by Taylor. Discussion, council discussion?
Well, this reminds me of our earlier conversation this evening with the county on the American Rescue Plan. You know, anytime we can, we have areas of concern that are of importance to both of us, you know, it's certainly to each of our benefits to try to work out an agreement between the two entities. And as Danielle mentioned, this took some time. It's a complicated, it's a complicated matter how to address these fringe areas. And, you know, the emphasis here has been more on process and trying to identify areas of where we anticipate growth to occur and to try to better control those outcomes from the city's standpoint so that they are consistent with our comp plan. So, you know, I just want to thank staff. This was a, you know, a real labor to get through this process and apply it to, identify and apply it to the various areas around the edges of Iowa City, so I will be supporting this.
Any other discussion?
I think this is a pretty technical and very staff-intensive process, so thank you for that, but I certainly will have more confidence when we look at things where the fringe area agreement comes into play and seeing how a project aligns with that. It will, I'll feel better about how that came to be, knowing that this was so carefully worked on for a long time to get us here. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the focus of this, of this new proposed agreement on the areas that are actually of interest to the city with respect to growth areas and areas in which we really do have an interest. It seemed that under the old agreement, we were spending some time looking at things over which we literally had no, no voice at all, so this really seems to split the responsibilities fairly inequitably.
Yeah, I agree with what you said, but also the good thing is like for the identifying like city growth area, that sometime we have like some kind of control. We don't have like the control for the other, but at least we have, you know, some control where the builds there will be for, you know, like complying with the city's standards. If there is no further discussion, roll call, please?
Teague?
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 11B Comprehensive Plan Amendment Southwest District. Resolution to amend the Southwest District Plan and IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan to allow intensive commercial and open space land use for the property south of IWV Road SW and west of Slower Road. And I will open, the applicant requests defer. I will open the public hearing. And can I get a motion to defer? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor. Moved by Weiner's and second by Taylor. Any council discussion? Then voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Item?
You should probably ask if there are any opposed. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
Uh, go ahead. What'd you say?
Could you ask if there are any opposed? I want to make sure that that's clear.
Oh, just for the record.
Is there any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Proton. If I jump in just for clarification in the audience, if you didn't catch that, the applicant has asked that this item be deferred one meeting, so the council is in the process of deferring the consideration, meaning it will appear on the next agenda for the first vote.
And to be clear, I assume the motion was to defer to the next meeting at November 30th. Is that correct?
Yes, the motion is to defer to the next meeting, like in the 30th.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're gonna discuss all this again next meeting. We received it deferred late, that's why.
Right. And for the further benefit of the public, there of course are two subsequent items that are related. They've asked the same thing for those, so we'll be opening public comment, and I assume council will again be moving to defer.
For item, all the item, 11B, C, and D will be deferred. They have a request for defer, and we see, that's what I wanna say. Okay, 11C. Annexation IWV Road Southwest. Resolution to annex approximately 70.39 acres of land located west of the intersection of IWV Road SW Southwest and Slower Road. Also, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And the applicant's request defer to the next meeting. Can I get a motion to defer for the meeting on the 11th 30th?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, second.
Second.
Second by Weiner. Council discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 11D, rezoning of IWV Road Southwest. Order, contrary, rezoning approximately 53.36 acre from county agriculture to intensive commercial, approximately 17.03 acres from county agriculture to interim development commercial, and approximately nine acres from rural residential to intensive commercial for land located west of the intersection of IWV Road Southwest and Slower Road. Also, applicant refused to defer. And I opened the public hearing. Can I have a motion to defer to 11 30th, November 30th? Moved by Taylor, second.
Second, Thomas.
Second by Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abused? Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 11E. Zoning Code Amendment from Base Zoning and Standards. Orders Amendment Title 14, Zoning Code and Title 15, Land Subdivision to Create Form Based Zoning. And standards consist with the South District Plan. Can I get a motion to adopt? Pass on the buck? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Weiner. Second by Bergus. Public discussion? Is anyone in the public would like to speak on this item? Council discussion?
I just think it's, it's really great to finally see something like this. It seems to me like it has all the elements of a balanced community for that South District Plan, so I'm really happy to see this.
It's been a long time coming.
Agreed.
Okay, roll call, please?
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Mims? Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Motion passes 5 to 0. Item number 12. Flown Rock of Screening Replacement. Resolution approved in project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Rock and Screening Replacement Project. Establish amount of bed security to accompany each bed directly City of Clark to post notice to the bedder and fixing time and place for the receive of the bed. I am going to open the public hearing, and we will start with staff presentation. Ben Clark. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Clark. I work in the Engineering Division of the Public Works Department, and I'm here to talk about the Influent Rake and Screen Replacement Project. So this project is located at our wastewater treatment facility. It's on the far south edge of town, next to Kicker Soccer Park, if you haven't been there. And I don't know if you can see this image very well. I found this today. I thought it was kind of interesting. This image actually shows the entire plant, but the areas in orange were upgraded during the 2012 project when we demolished the north plant and moved all those facilities to the south plant. And you'll notice there's some areas that aren't shaded in orange, so those, those areas didn't really have any work. They haven't had any major work done in them since really, since this plant was built 20 years ago. And the two areas I have circled, the first one on the north end is where this project is gonna take place, and the other circled area is the digester complex, and you'll probably be hearing a lot more about that, you know, as the year progresses here, we're gonna have a major project there. So treating wastewater is basically a series of processes that takes, you know, dirty water, makes it clean. This is a diagram of sort of our pre-treatment phase, and this is kind of where we get the debris and grit out of the wastewater that flows into the plant. And if you can see that, the area that's got a red square around it, that's, that is the very first process. That's the screening process, and that's what we're gonna replace in this project. This is an image of what a screen and rake looks like. It's a little hard to get a picture of ours because it's, it goes straight down about three stories, but you can see on the left that wastewater comes in from the sewer pipes. It's got a lot of sticks, larger debris, towels, things of that nature. Those get hung up in the screen, and then they get, they get lifted up by a rake to the surface where we then dispose of them. We send that debris to the landfill. This is a picture of, these are our actual screens. This is the top of them right here, so those, those rakes lift the debris up and they dump it in these hand carts. Staff then have to take these hand carts year-round. They have to push them to the grit building where they dump them out, put lime in them, and then about once a week, they load it with the front-end loader into a dump truck, take to the landfill. It's a very labor-intensive process. So this, this project will actually replace those with a, with a roll-off container, and that's what this is a picture of. So it'll just take one person to hook it on. it on, they can pull it up on the back of a truck and drive it to the landfill. Um, here's a, here's a picture of the Influent Pump Station, so there'll be a small building addition off this that'll hold that roll-off container that I just showed you. Also be replacing some of this worn-out pavement, you can see it's in pretty bad shape, it's, some of it's been replaced with gravel. Just an overhead view of the project, so, um, on the, in the blue square off the left of the building is gonna be the, the addition for the, the roll-off, and then we'll also have another, uh, sort of a dump station for septic haulers, if they bring in a, a load that's heavy and grit, they can dump it there, it'll pre-screen it, don't have to send it through the pumps. So that's pretty much it for the project, if anybody has any questions?
Any question? To the staff? Thank you. Public discussion, anyone would, in the public would like to address this matter? If none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Bergus.
Moved by Bergus, second.
Second.
Second by Weiner. Council discussion? If none, roll call please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Mims? Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague? Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number thirteen, Musketeen Avenue, American Legion Road Speed Limit. Orders amended Title nine entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter three entitled Rules of the Road, Section six entitled Speed Restriction, Subsection B entitled Expectation to modify the thirty-five mile per hour speed zone for American Legion Road and Musketeen Avenue, and this is a first consideration, can I get a motion to get first consideration?
So moved, Thomas.
Moved by Thomas? Second?
Taylor.
Second by Taylor. And now staff, we have Kent here to give us.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kent Rollston, Transportation Planner. Uh, real quickly, the ordinance before you is simply to modify the existing thirty-five mile per hour speed limit to twenty-five mile per hour for a portion of American Legion Road as well as Musketeen Avenue. Uh, currently, the existing thirty-five mile per hour speed limit extends roughly from Juniper, uh, through the new roundabout at Scott Boulevard, and then east, uh, to Buckingham, Buckingham Lane, excuse me. Um, as the project was completed for that section of roadway, uh, it's now just a little bit of code cleanup to try and get that speed limit down to twenty-five mile per hour, and it's important to note that during the design of the project, uh, elements were incorporated to convert the roadway, of course, from a rural to urban cross-section with curb and gutter, uh, but there were also some elements, uh, offered to increase the amount of multimodal travel in that corridor, uh, some buffered bike lanes, uh, ten-foot wide travel lanes, which are narrower, narrower than we're used to, as well as a ten-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of American Legion Road, and then a six-foot sidewalk on the south side of American Legion Road. Uh, this is the first, of course, phase of the project, uh, that we're talking about tonight, and then next year, after the next phase from Buckingham Lane out to Taft Avenue is completed, then we would come back and ask for that speed limit to be lowered as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
There is a school zoning speed anyway on that street, right? It will be just consistent from Scott Boulevard until?
Correct, so this would be, this would make it consistent all the way, once, once we get through the project next year, consistent all the way essentially from the new roundabout at Scott Boulevard, all the way to Taft Avenue, except for the school speed limit zone, which is twenty mile per hour, uh, during school hours there for the new elementary school.
Any question to the staff?
No, but, I mean, but it sounds like it's in line with what you've been talking about, Counselor, Counselor Thomas, and trying to, trying to align the, make, make the streets such that they are conducive to go in the speed that we, that it's safe to go.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Now, public discussion, is there anyone would like to address this matter from the public? Council discussion?
Well, as Counselor Weiner mentioned, this, you know, this is a project where, where some of the design standards that are associated with reducing, uh, traffic speed have been implemented, so I'd like to thank staff for, uh, doing that on this project. I hope it's successful, you know, there are a lot of moving parts, so to speak, that go into, you know, how drivers perceive what speed it is, is, it is safe to drive at, um, and the ones that Kent referenced, you know, the traffic lane widths, having the bike lanes and so on, I think, uh, point speeds in that direction, and I, I hope it's successful. Again, uh, be, why, why is it important that it's successful? We're, we're trying to, uh, develop our, our streets so that they are safe for everyone. You know, we have the bike lanes, we have pedestrians, and it's, it's clear from a lot of evidence that in order for that to work well, the traffic speeds need to be in that twenty to twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, um, so that these, these different modes of travel can cohabit that right-of-way. So, you know, it's an important goal, since we're trying to move, move our transportation alternatives into the picture, uh, so I hope it's successful.
Agreed. Any another discussion? If not, roll call please.
Bergus?
Yes.
Mims? Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague? Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Item fourteen, annual TIF certification filling. Resolution directing the filling of TIF certification under Iowa Code Section four zero three point one nine for twenty-twenty-one end-of-year certification of urban renewal projects. Can I get motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Weiner, second.
Second, Bergus.
Second by Bergus. Staff comment in presentation or? Yeah, Wendy Ford, welcome.
Hi, I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. And tonight you have actually two items related to TIF, and I'll just use this time here to reference, uh, make reference to both of them. This first one is the resolution that authorizes the certification of debts and obligations for our tax increment financing, uh, projects that you've, uh, voted on prior. So this just ensures that you are on board with the, uh, funding amounts, reduction of funding amounts, or the stopping of funding amounts of TIF coming into the city for those projects. And in order to do that, you saw in your packet a set of forms, there are basically three forms, one that would, uh, initiate collection of tax increment for a project, and we have a couple of those, um, for example, the, uh, TIF-funded industrial energy efficiency, uh, grants that we'll be giving would be included in a Form One. A Form Two requests a specific dollar amount less than the full amount of available increment, and that happens on occasion, um, such as with the Hilton Garden Inn project, where a portion of their incentive was the hotel motel tax. Well, we don't want to, uh, provide the amount in TIF that was provided by hotel motel tax, so we reduce the amount of TIF required for that. And Form Three actually ends the collection of tax increment. The, uh, I guess the main takeaway is, that I would say, is that these tax increment, uh, financed projects have been very valuable to the city over time. I also had a, a chart, or a table, I should say, in your packet that illustrated that the base value of all of the projects that the, the city has funded with tax increment financing was thirty million dollars, and if you compare that base value with today's value of two-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollars, you can see that through TIF and, and the use of TIF leveraging projects that might not otherwise happen in Iowa City, we now have new taxable value of two-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars in Iowa City. Uh, the, uh, the other, or the next item is actually the annual urban renewal report to the state, and that is essentially a look back at how the sources of tax increment financing funding and the uses have, uh, been, uh, been used, basically. So those are essentially my comments for the night on those two reports, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I see Dennis over there, and he might be able to pinch hit if I didn't have an answer for you.
Any question for Wendy or Dennis?
No, just thanks for, especially for the energy efficiency ones, but the, my, my perception is that Iowa City does TIF well.
Thank you. Now, public discussion, would anyone from the public would like to address this matter? I see none. Council discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mims? Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague? Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number fifteen, annual urban renewal report to the state. Resolution approving the physical years ending twenty-twenty-one annual urban renewal report. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Thomas.
Moved by Thomas? Second?
Second.
Second by Weiner. And we get the presentation. Now, I will open into the public, anyone would like to discuss this item? I see none, council discussion? Roll call please.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague? Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Motion passes five to zero. Item sixteen, council appointment. A member must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specified qualification are stated. Sixteen A, Board of Adjustment, when vacancies to fill five years, term January first twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-first twenty-twenty-six. Council discussion?
Well, that position, um, the, the term expired from Mark Russo, Mark, Mark, I think, had been appointed just a few months ago, um, so I would support, uh, appointing him again for a full term.
I agree.
He also, he happens to be the only applicant, but it, it seems like a good.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, then we need a motion to appoint Marcus again.
So moved, John.
I move Mark Russo be appointed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He just moved that.
Second. Because I see like a lot of people saying the same thing, so we're gonna go right with it, yeah. Okay, you, is moved by Thomas?
Yes.
And second by Taylor. Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abuse? Motion passes five to zero. Item sixteen B, Board of Abils License Election. Board of the Bill License Election, or if a qualified trade representative does not submit an application within three months of the announcement of the vacancies, a member may be appointed who is qualified by his experience and training to pass on a matter pertaining to building construction. When vacancies to fill a five-year stamp from January first twenty-twenty-one to December thirty-first twenty-twenty-five. Discussion. Council discussion?
It appears that GT Carr is the only current applicant.
And he does, in his, uh, history, does have some electrical experience, he's not licensed electrician, but he has the electrical knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if he might resign in the future, but he says he's willing to serve until, essentially, until a licensed electrician can be found to serve.
Are we required to leave it open for three months for an electrician to potentially come forward, or can we go ahead and appoint?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Right, I think three months, I was about to lean over and ask Kelly how long this position has been advertised, 'cause I, I didn't check.
It, it says at the top, council announcement date was ten-six-twenty-twenty.
Oh, yeah, then we're good.
Yeah. Thank you, I was thinking twenty-one.
Thanks for catching that.
Any?
I move to appoint GT Carr.
Second.
Moved by Bergus, second by Weiner's. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abuse? Motion passes five to zero. Climate Action, item number sixteen C, Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year stamp, January first twenty-twenty-two, December, to December thirty-first twenty-twenty-four. And on this item, I just would like to, everybody, I guess, receive the email from Noton, and I think we need to discuss that, uh, do you have it, you have it on the lead handout?
Right.
Before we can move on this.
Right, also, also, and on the three we have, the gender balance requirement of two male and one nun.
Two male and one nun.
I agree that we, uh, do need to talk about, um, John Fraser's application before we, uh, talk about any of the other applicants, I, it sounds as though he's been a very strong member for that commission, and I myself have forgotten things or, or missed times on things, so, uh, I think we should give him the benefit of the doubt, and I, I would approve his application.
And can I ask a question, Kelly, is John has, like, a full term, or was like?
You mean initially?
Uh-huh.
I laid handouts, 'cause I have the, he probably stated on his application if he was serving a full.
As, as Kelly's looking at that, the, the Climate Action Commission is, is so new that it would be, he would have been one of the, the first appointments. But we staggered those terms, so, um, that's probably what we need to, that's probably the answer you're seeking, is whether his initial term was two, three, or four years, however we staggered that.
Okay. Are we moving on to other?
Yona.
Other applicants, and, since we're filling two spots?
Yes, but the first one, I think, I wanna do like one by one.
Oh.
Sorry, because, that's easy for me. Yeah, anyone would like to?
So I nominate John Fraser.
Okay, motion?
Fill one of the spots.
Can we, I just had a comment about that. Are we gonna discuss each one individually? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, that, that's for me, it will be easy, each one individually, now we're starting with John. If everybody agree, and I guess, uh, Counsel Taylor, she already put a motion?
I just had a comment about it, um, just recall that we had a very similar situation with the Chair of the HCDC Commission, who was, uh, V at the time, who came and let us know that they also had dismissed the deadline of, uh, submitting the application, so I don't know if that case is distinguishable from this one, but at that time, we did not give them the opportunity to serve again.
I believe some of the council here was in favor of that, uh, myself, I was in favor on that, and I guess Counsel Taylor also was in favor of that, but the rest of the commi, the, the council wasn't?
For what it's worth, uh, Kelly and I spent a good deal of time looking back and forth at this application and so forth, and because the, the date of the application compared to the, uh, advertising date, actually, it was within a year, and thus, the application was, was valid, am I remembering that right?
The previous, he had, um, thought his term was ending.
Yeah, a year ago, yeah.
And so he applied, and when we realized his term wasn't ending, we emailed him, notified him that it wasn't ending, and that he should reapply coming this October when it's announced. But the date of that initial application, um, was October, November third.
Yeah.
And so the council announcement date on this one was October third. So he'd be within that twelve-month period from last year's application.
Okay.
Um, he also did submit one late, so all of that was in your. He also did submit one late, so all of that was in your late handouts on Monday. So, I mean, I could make an argument either way. It's totally up to you guys whether, you know, you base it off of last year's application or consider it.
Right, my, my point is to answer, or to address, Council Member Burgess's point. And I think it's distinguishable, I'm not as familiar with the facts of V's application, but this one is within one year. It was, you know, almost a year ago, inadvertent in that way, but it was still within twelve months. And so you could act on that application.
Which is, the application is really, still good to be used.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful.
Yes, okay. Okay, then I need a motion to appoint John. Moved by Taylor, right?
So moved.
Second, please.
I will second that, Thomas.
Second by Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And, okay, that's the first male. We still have another male and one female, right? Am I right?
One either gender, if I recall correctly.
Oh, doesn't matter, okay.
One, I'm sorry, one male and then one of either gender.
Okay, sure, sure. Then?
I was impressed with Gabrielle Sturdevent's application. Had been a climate action ambassador and is in environmental studies at the U. I would recommend him.
Who?
Gabrielle, Gabrielle Sturdevent. S-T-U-R-D-E-V-A-N-T.
Okay.
Yeah, I liked his application as well.
All right. Weiner and Burgess?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, then I would like a motion to approve Gabrielle.
So moved.
Second? By, who seconded?
I'll second Thomas.
Thomas? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion basis five to zero, to appoint Gabrielle.
So we have one more. With respect to the third one, I, she currently resides in Cedar Rapids, but it's supposed to be, it said she's moving to Iowa City by, by January, which is when, I believe, this appointment begins. That's Elena Swanson. I know that she applied once before in the summer for, when there was an opening in this. And it's, and she, she struck me as really, really well-qualified. Plus, I'm really interested in getting some of the younger generation onto this, onto this commission. So, I mean, I, on the, on base, on, with the requirement that she would be here in Iowa City by that time, I would be interested in appointing her. I don't know if there's any way to ensure that. She said, states that in her application.
Yeah, my, my only concern about that is, is I don't know if you can make an appointment contingent upon follow-through of a change of residence like that. It might put the council in an awkward position come January one if she doesn't live here, of having to remove her.
And also, like, the time of the appointment, she's not?
Not presently a resident, as I understand it, yes.
Well, I also, I also liked Michael Enon Lynch. Her application, was she was someone that I was, would suggest?
I agree with that.
That's fine. You do?
I agree.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I'd move Michael Elon, Enon Lynch, be appointed.
She's a female.
Okay, moved by Thomas.
I'll second.
Second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, and opposed, same sign? Motion basis five to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second by Weiner, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same size? Motion basis five to zero. Sixteen D, Human Rights Commission. Three vacancies to fill three-years term, January first, 2022, 2022 to December thirty first, 2024. Council discussion.
And two, gender balance requirement, two female, one nun.
Two female, and we need one nun, okay?
For this one, I, I would propose that we reappoint Siri Brun, who's only been, who's, would be one of the females. She's, we appointed her several months ago. She appears to have been working very hard on it, and I thought wrote a very compelling request to be reappointed to a full term.
I agree.
I agree.
I support that.
I agree too. And the second female?
I, I don't have a strife. Did you wanna take these one by one, as we have before?
No, this is, I'm gonna do it, the whole of them together for the Female Rights Commission.
Okay, so we got two, two women and one. I don't, I mean, there's a number of people I like, but I go, let somebody else go.
I have thirty-something candidates, and I applied all of them. They're all, very good, very well-qualified. I, I wasn't sure about Ali Ahmed, A-H-M-E-D. Said that he had served before on the HRC, which apparently was quite some time ago. But he's president of the Sudanese-American community, and it would be great to have a member from the Muslim and Sudanese community on there.
I was bored that because, not because I'm Sudanese, but because Adil Adams, he was Sudanese too, the one that, his term is experienced, and I would like really to see continue of representative of immigrants' community on the board.
Right, the, the other, the alternative for that is also, is the, is the, actually, the second person in the packet, Asma Ali, who seemed quite well-qualified. So I don't, I don't, it's hard for me to differentiate between whether one is more qualified one person, but they both seem to have substantial qualifications.
I guess, Ali, because, like, for example, last time, Adil applied again, and we said, oh, yeah, he had went in, we can give him second term. And Ali, I don't think he have, like, not a full term, maybe, if I can recall very good. I don't know, Kelly. When he, it was a long time ago, but I, I think he joined to take somebody else.
Previous.
Yeah, previous term, and he, he haven't have any, like, full complete. And since we've been giving people second term, I think we can appoint him.
I would support that. I move appointing Ali Ahmad to the Human Rights Commission.
We're gonna do it all of them together.
Oh, you wanna do them all together?
Yeah, we need one more female, I think.
Or one nun, no, yeah.
Yeah, because.
Oh, wait, two female, we need another female, yes.
One more female. Who is in favor of Sylvia Johns?
I, I had circled her as a possibility. She said she's a member of the, she's a BIPOC woman, and been in Iowa City for a couple of years. And she's dedicated her career to human rights for all, and that it would be an honor to serve. So I, I liked what she had to say.
Global education and rescuing scholars.
Okay, now, we have all of them, we have Sylvia Johns and Ali Ahmed, with the third woman in the beginning, we said?
Siri Brun.
Siri Brun. Yeah, can I have a motion to approve the three of them?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Second by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion basis five to zero. Sixteen E, item number sixteen E, Parks and Recreation Commission. Three vacancies to fill a four-years term, January first, 2022, to January thirty first, 2025. Council discussion, do you have anyone in mind?
This is one, one female, one male, and one nun.
One female, that's easy, one female, one male, one nun. Anyone in mind?
Well, I would, I'm supportive of Brian Morelli for one of the male.
Brian?
Brian Morelli.
Larry, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Good, and the second? Female or nun?
Michelle Wiegand, I don't know if I pronounced her name, focused on youth development, social work, and outdoor ed.
She said some really good things about Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Yeah, I had her as well.
One more?
Missy Forbes.
Who?
I had her as well.
Missy Forbes.
Great, when we agree.
Great. I guess I need a motion to approve Brian, Michelle, and Missy.
I move that we, that we appoint Missy Forbes, Brian Morelli, and Michelle Wiegand to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, moved by Weiner.
I'll second.
Second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion basis five to zero. Item sixteen F, Public Art Advisory Committee. At law. One vacancy to fill a three-years term, January first, 2022, to December thirty first, 2024. Any, is this gender balance or anything, Council Weiner?
This is just a one, one male, right, I think, isn't it?
One male?
Right, just one male.
And Edward Boyken is serving his first term. I would approve him.
He seemed like, from the current applicants, he seemed like the only one who was a good, who would be a good fit right now.
Right, the other ones listed several commissions they wanted to be on, but his.
And we already appointed Gabrielle Sturdevent to the Climate Commission.
Right, right. So I would say I would move, we appoint Edward Boyken, B-O-Y-K-E-N, to Public Art.
I'll second.
Moved by, okay. Moved by Taylor.
I'll second.
Second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion basis five to zero. Item sixteen G, Senior Center Commission. Two vacancies to fill a three-years term, January first, 2022, to December thirty first, 2024. And Council Weiner, is there a gender balance here?
The two males, but we only have, like, I think there's only one applicant.
One applicant.
Yeah, happens to be a male.
So we'll just re-advertize the other, keep advertising the other vacancy until filled?
But we can appoint this now, right?
You can.
Yeah.
It sounds like someone, Douglas Corti is his name. It sounds like someone who has taken a number of classes at the Senior Center, and has some expertise to offer when it comes to website development, educational website development.
I'm, I'm usually a little reluctant to appoint someone that lists several boards and commissions, but he did mention his interest in the Senior Center more than the others. And this commission really needs members, so.
Yes, they do.
I would agree.
All right. Can I have a motion to appoint him?
So move to appoint Douglas Corti to the Senior Center Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion basis five to zero. Item seventeen, vacancies new. Applicant must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specified qualifications are stated. Staff will not publish addition notice after the initial announcement, but will continue to advertise vacancies on the city website and council agenda. More information may be found on the city website or in the city clerk office. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointed December thirty first, 2023. Applicant must be received, applications must be received by 5:00 P.M. Tuesday, December twenty eighth, 2021. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, appointment June thirty, 2023. Applicant also must be reside, application must be received by 5:00 P.M. Tuesday, December twenty eighth, 2021. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Second by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed? Motion basis five to zero. Item number eighteen, announce of vacancies previous. Applicant must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of old unless specified qualifications are stated. Staff will not publish addition notice after the initial announcement, but will continue to advertise vacancies on the city website and council agenda. More information may be found on the city website or the city clerk office. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill unexpired term upon appointment, June thirty, 2023. Application must be received by 5:00 P.M. Tuesday, November twenty-three, 2021. Airborne Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-years term, January first, 2021, to December thirty first, 2025. Airborne Zoning Commission, Iowa City representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term, January first, 2022, to December thirty first, 2027. Board of the, Board of Abils, Building Design Professional, one vacancy to fill a five-years term, January first, 2022, to December thirty first, 2026. Hostile Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-years term, affected upon appointment, January thirty, June thirtieth, 2024. Hostile Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, affected upon appointment, June thirty to 2022. Vacants will be remain open until filled. Item number nine, and this is where our Elizabeth and Ann.
Hi, Council. Oh, we have a few announcements tonight, so I'm just gonna send an email after I finish reading them off, so you all have them. The first is our GR Director, Student Government's GR Director, and the President, and a few other execs are going to DC this week to advocate for a few issues, including affordable housing, Title IV, college affordability and Pell Grants, increased DACA programming, especially for graduate students, SNAP and other basic needs funding, and voting rights. And they're talking to a few different US Congress members, so that's a really cool opportunity. The airport shuttle going between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City is going to be up and running during Thanksgiving and winter break. All riders just have to pay a $10 fee. And all the information for that is on the undergraduate student government website or on any of our social media channels. And then, the USG Director of Health and Safety is looking to compile off-campus mental health resources for the university counseling services website. So we would like to talk to, like, any city staff that knows more about these resources, so we're able to send those over to them.
We also have a couple of affordable housing recommendations that Sarah Barron had presented to the Affordable Housing Commission. These policies last week that we came up with, and we want to advocate for them to counsel as well. The first being to spread out annual inspections of houses to allow adequate time for complaints, updating the safety codes to encourage biannual auditing. Educating renters, especially students, where, report safety concerns and concerns with landlords. Accountability is also of a priority, and was mentioned previously as well. Similarly, we want to make sure that the audit includes checking for recycling and updated recycling signage. Making, this is to help make renters aware of who is in charge of landlord accountability and where to go. We would like to also create a city magnet that goes on fridges with this information as a possible option. And we want to reinforce that landlords could possibly lose permits if they fail to meet safety accountability and sustainability standards. From our Runners Guide, we found that it was very easy for landlords to get away with a lot of these standards, as well as just advocate to make them less so. Our second recommendation is to ensure, or is to create a community solar farm. Our second recommendation is to ensure, or is to create a community solar farm where renters can opt-in to participate and pay a tax, but receive benefits with sustainable energy, as well as reducing utility costs in consequence. Third, we would like to make sure students are able to qualify in affordable housing efforts downtown through city channels, including opportunities for rent abatement and subsidies, especially to low-income students and less traditional students, including undocumented students. We would do this by increasing the threshold to 20% of housing is affordable for students and community members. And then finally, we would hope to create a rent abatement program during Homeless Week that has opportunities for students to stay in city housing if they have nowhere else to go. I'm sure you all are familiar with Homeless Week and how that's an endemic issue that we need to address. And as Anna had mentioned earlier, these will all be emailed out to you as well. We're excited to meet with Counselor Weiner at the start of December to talk about affordable housing, and we'll be following up with you all to hopefully discuss this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, USG. Any question to them, or comment?
What a great report. I mean, really, a lot of, a lot of very detailed thinking, thought has gone into it. That's, we should...
I agree.
Take a look at what you, what you send us. Thank you.
I just sent the email out, so all of you should have it.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, item 21 is city council informations, and this is, you can report in any meeting you attend, or upcoming meeting, or any, you know, item of interest.
Mayor Potem, I'll jump in. I have some comments that I wanted to make relating back to what Counselor Weiner and you had mentioned during the work session, that stemmed from the arrest of our Truth and Reconciliation Commission Chair. But really, what I want to speak on is thinking about the systems involved, because systemically, in this case, I want to presume good intent. I don't believe this was a political hit. I don't want to believe it was anything targeted. And so, as a system, what happened was what was supposed to happen. It was a viable and reasonable outcome to have someone pulled off the street in a non-emergency, to be put in handcuffs and put in a cage for seven days. Systemically, we think that that was an appropriate reaction to that circumstance. And if we agree that this particular case was wrong, and should have been handled differently, it should not be because it looked bad, but because that should not happen to any person, not because it was one particular person who is closer to us, or who we care more about, or who happens to be in the spotlight. And the choices that led up to that incident were many layers of discretion. And like the events of June 3, 2020, which I believe were lawful exercises of discretion to use tear gas and pepper balls against children and young adults in our community, the system relies on discretion to be humane, to not make those choices, or to have different outcomes. So I really challenge us to think, is that a system that is sustainable and safe for our entire community, or can we work together to look for alternatives to that system?
I agree. Well said. Counsel Burgess.
Well said. It appears, you know, this is, I think, really at the root of one of the things we're challenged with, is how what happened seems to have been normalized. And that's a concern, right? We've been, we've been working on, on this, or been engaged in the issue of trying to address, you know, how we, how we make sure the community is safe. So it was a little bit startling to see that we, you know, that something happened, and it seemed to kind of be, you know, normalized on some level. So I think it is an important issue. We clearly, you know, there's, there needs to be some discussion of procedurally, how do we move forward so that that, that doesn't happen? It does, you know, Counselor Weiner, you had mentioned, you know, it does seem like there, in my mind, it could be a relatively simple process of how we try to assess what a situation is, and what's the appropriate action.
Is somewhat, from my perspective, but it wasn't, it's not at all about optics. It's about, is this an issue of public safety?
Yeah.
Is someone a danger to public safety? If not, then there are other ways to address it, that are much more appropriate, humane, and decent for helping to build community and trust.
Okay. Any other report?
Yeah, so both on, where was the, on November 6, both the mayor and I were invited to participate in a Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition event that took place at Parkview Church. It was Phase 2 of the South District Affordable Housing Advocacy Initiative, sponsored by the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, the city, aesthetic planning, Habitat for Humanity, and funded by a Human Rights Commission grant. And it was, it was, from my perspective, was a really impressive process, because they had engaged, they go, they went to community members where they were, outside their, an apartment residence, they engaged them, explained to some of them what their, what their rights were, and what they were about, and asked them if they wanted to participate in this process. So by the time, the hour that the mayor and I participated was essentially having a discussion with them about what, how you approach the city, how you get on a commission, how, what some of the other modalities are. It just, it is, I, it's, if you have a chance to participate in one, I highly recommend it. It's, I think they're, that what they've launched is a really productive educational process that can bring, you know, sort of literally more effective, probably than listening posts, can really bring the council to the people and allow them, to people, and allow them to understand what their rights are and how they can exercise them.
Anyone else? Okay, before we move on, I really would like to acknowledge Mary Masher and Joe Backham, who both announced that they are not running for reelection next year. And they're 20-plus years of service to Iowa City in the State House. You know, they really work hard for the residents of Iowa City. So this is, just to acknowledge them. Item 21, and report from the city staff. Item A, City Manager Office.
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay. You with the city manager?
No report, thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing for me either, thank you.
The city clerk? Okay. Item 22, for my first running meeting, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Weiner, taken by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abos? Same sign. We adjourned.
Congratulations.
I hope I did good.
Good job, yes.